Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, May 22, 2023. I now call the meeting to order and I will ask Commissioner Vavar to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Vavar. Anna, if we could do the voice roll call, please.
Chair Erath.
Present.
Vice Chair Toller. Commissioner Rojas.
Here.
Commissioner Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade. Absent. Commissioner Vavar?
Present.
Commissioner Taber?
Here.
And just for the record, I believe Commissioner Andrade will be here in just a couple minutes. So she'll be coming in. I don't see any announcements or presentations this evening, which brings us to public comments. So for those of you who are here in chambers, these are for matters that are not listed on the agenda. So if you would, please come to the front and I'll give you three minutes, ma'am.
So my name's Wendy Samo. I'm here about the 12, you know, at 140 Seventeenth Street again, as usual. So I just was reading over the screw you letter that I got from the, you know, code enforcement. And it seems like we're a little late. It was March 8th of 2019. So I'll have to know how many signatures I need. But I got 13 in no time and 11 of these are just from inside my community of trailer park. And then in your letter, it said that staff said that nobody mentioned the base at all. But I do want to bring up two of these people because we walked down one side of the road and knocked on about three, three, four doors and we got three people to sign, you know. But at this house, it was a three or four-year-old little girl that was getting woke up at 5:00 a.m. in the morning by the base. So I wonder what you would do if that was your daughter or granddaughter getting up, woke up at 5:00 a.m. by base, how you would soothe them and comfort them. And then the cops show up and the cops can't do anything about it. Let's remember that. Okay. This is beyond ridiculous with this gym. And so I'm here again. I will get as many signatures to, you know, get this CUP corrected to where they are a gym. They should keep their base inside the gym. You can hear the instructor, here we go. You know, I mean, they go like high base, low base, any type of base they want, as long as they want. And it's just, it's not acceptable. You know, you wouldn't want it in your neighborhood. Nobody wants it in their neighborhood and they're right in front of us, less than 200 feet away from us, actually. You know, it's not very far. Yeah. So, um, so if we could just fix this, that'd be great. Sorry I wasn't here last meeting, but had to go on a little vacation. But I will be coming every meeting until I hear no base out of the gym. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simone. Is there anyone else in chambers who wishes to speak on an item that is not listed on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Anna, if we can move to Zoom or telephone?
Call-in user, you may provide your public comment.
Good evening. I'd like to remind everybody that this Wednesday, OurNeighborhoodVoices.com will be having a Zoom meeting. And the nature of the Zoom meeting is to inform everybody on what is going on on the initiative that should be on the ballot in November 20th. And this process is gaining great strength. It's got 50,000 local leaders that have signed on. It has SCAG that has endorsed it. It has many, many elected officials. And basically, this initiative is going to return local power to the city councils and to the cities themselves regarding zoning and whatnot. And then I'd like to mention that at the study session last Tuesday regarding the inclusionary housing, I mean, that was a really pitiful. And if that's a sign of how we're going to get some real low-income housing, I mean, I really feel sorry for those that are holding their breath waiting for this type of housing to come through. It was just like a jumble mumble. Nobody knows exactly what we want, how we're going to get it. There were no solid opinions. It looks like the expert that gave the information had some solid plans on how to move forward, but nobody wanted to jump on board and access how we can get on board with this inclusionary housing or whatever we're going to do. So I hope if this comes to pass again and we have another study session, we have it in a location where everybody can hear. There was no ability for those with ADA hearing to have any of them appropriate equipment so that they could hear. The audio system was very poor. So if you're going to hold it and waste the community's time, at least hold it in the facility like city council where we can all hear and participate. And again, don't forget, tune in this Wednesday, OurNeighborhoodVoices.com. It's a Zoom meeting and believe me, you'll be astounded at some of the information that's being given at that location. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spadoni. Anyone else, Anna?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so just a second round. If there's anyone else in chambers who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda this evening, feel free to come up. All right, seeing none. This brings us to Planning Commissioner comments and suggestions. And I'll start out with Commissioner Taber, if you have any, anything to add.
I don't have anything tonight, thanks.
All right, Commissioner Vavar?
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring some concern up to staff. So there was the Stizzy grand opening that happened about two weekends ago, I believe it was. And I was contacted by a business owner at 2790 Harbor Boulevard about her clients not being able to park at their parking and as well as herself. So is there any way that we as a city might have some measures to prevent grand openings from becoming a parking issue at future grand openings?
Thank you, Commissioner Vavar. Yeah, that Stizzy event did have a grand opening plan with a parking arrangement. It was quite busy. We actually, it's unfortunate that there was some parking issues. It just, but it's a sign of a good business, I think. But I can tell you from the perspective of continuing on, I've visited that site on multiple occasions since that time and the parking has relaxed and there's abundance of it. I don't think anybody envisioned that the parking would be or that the attraction to that grand opening would be the way it was. On the other hand, it was a great event from a grand opening perspective for that company with a lot of attendees. And it did seem to be handled very well. There was more than almost, I think, more than a dozen security on site. And they're watching all of the buildings on the property and all the uses. And although parking was a challenge, I can, I can tell you that it did seem to go quite well.
So, so essentially, the city is okay with parking issues for grand opening events?
So for, so for grand opening events, the project applicants on all of these conditional use permits that you're reviewing have a provision or a condition of approval that talks about a grand opening plan.
Okay.
And Stizzy did have one.
Okay. But I guess if anything ever was a problem in the future, then I guess condition number seven could be used right to trigger some kind of city review of parking?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, and just as, I guess, as a follow-up to these concerns, I think there's some, well, there are well-intentioned people out there who think that removing parking requirements would magically get rid of parking and make that, you know, not an issue. But I think that currently, as things stand, most people need to get around in vehicles and, you know, I am a proponent of walkable city and bikeable city. But I think that when we consider kind of drastic changes in planning, I think we need to take into consideration all the ramifications of what could happen if you get rid of pretty fundamental things such as parking. And I would argue that even if you got rid of parking requirements, developers wouldn't continue to build parking because most people drive. And I've seen this happen in L.A. with developers that I work with. And so I'm just putting that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vavar. Commissioner Rojas?
I have no comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick.
I didn't intend to speak, but I would strongly associate myself with comments from Commissioner Vavar. Dreams are good, but we live reality.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you. To my shame, I was not able to participate in Love Costa Mesa Day, but nobody else mentioned it. So I'll say something. I just think it's, I heard it was a great, well-attended, successful event. I think the sixth year in a row. And I'm just proud to be in a city that holds such a big, cool event like that with so much participation from all sides and from staff and our leadership and all sorts of organizations. So look out for that next year. Hopefully, everybody could sign up for something. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. And I have no comments this evening, which brings us to the consent calendar. We have three consent calendar items tonight, including two approvals of the minutes and a general plan conformity resolution of which I intend to pull this evening. So let's go ahead and take a, if you have any comments on the minutes, we'll take that as a separate vote. Does anyone have any comments? All right. Can I get a motion, please? Motion made by Commissioner Vavar. What's your motion, Commissioner?
Motion, motion to approve both sets of minutes and other item, as is.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Do you have any, anything else to add, Commissioner?
No comments, thank you.
All right, no comments for me either. So we can come to the vote.
That motion carries 5-0 with Commissioner Taber abstaining and Commissioner Andrade absent.
All right, great. Thank you, Anna. That brings us to the general plan conformity resolution. Do we need to read that into the record or?
Sure, just give me one moment.
Sure.
Since it was pulled, I had to, I have to add it.
Gotcha. I'll give Anna a little opportunity to get this taken care of. If you want, Anna, then read it into the record myself, unless you want to go. Okay, good.
Public hearing item number one, general plan conformity resolution for the City of Costa Mesa, one-year physical year 2023 to 2024 and five-year physical year 2023 to 2028 capital improvement programs.
Thank you. I'll say to my fellow commissioners and to the public before we get into this that it is not within our purview to necessarily make recommendations for budgetary changes here with these line items. This is more out of sheer curiosity because I found a lot of interest in some of the things that the city is doing moving forward. I also wanted the opportunity to ask our staff if there are any general plan amendments that we need to make to make room for some of these plans, more specifically on the sustainability and environmental side as well. So with that, let's go ahead and start with the energy and sustainability category on, I believe it's the first, the first page of the budget, Mr. Seth Raman. Thank you, Mr. Seth Raman for being here and really appreciate you being here to answer some questions. So starting out with the electric vehicle charging stations, I know the city has the two that are out front. I assume those are charge point chargers out there. Did we take advantage of California Edison's special program to put those in? When we got them in a couple year, well, what, a year and a half ago or so now?
Ms. Chairman, yeah, thank, thank you for having us today and commissioners. So the, the charging stations that you have outside and in the rear parking lot, we received a grant from Southern, AQMD.
AQMD.
So we used that grant to implement that project.
Okay. In, in that project back then, the only reason why I'm looking back in time is to kind of project where we're going into the future because there, there is a budget here for some additional chargers on the, on the grounds of the city. So is there a rubric of some sort or some kind of decision point within the RFP when we put this out to bid, why we would go with, say, charge point over Tesla? And how, how would we make that determination?
That's something that we can look into. I mean, we are not committed to charge point, if that's a question. It could be, it could be any other option too. So we'll look into what makes the best sense for us. The, the first phase of it is actually in our corp yard, which is not a public charging station. It'll be just for our fleet because we take, as we add more and more electric vehicles into our fleet, we want to make sure that they can be serviced and charged at the corp yard, you know, before they're delivered back to the city. So, so, so that's the, that's the first part of it. But then we are looking into public charging stations at other sites like Senior Center and Lions Park Campus and other areas too. So we'll definitely look into different options available.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Seth Raman. And I think, you know, with the, the public charging options, I understand that there, there's some hangup at the state level in terms of what charging stations can do in terms of a display. Like if it's public use, it has to have some form of display in most cases. So I do understand that. And there are some change, regulatory changes taking place right now. I think my concern moving forward, for whatever it's worth, is making sure that it's an asset to the city and that the return on investment comes much sooner than later. So looking at all those options to make sure we amortize more quickly is, is probably a good thing. Moving on, in a email from today that, thank you for, for sending that and to thank you to Ms. Afewoki for, for sending that, there was mention of a climate action plan as well. And I wanted to see how far along we are on that and to see if there's anything we're, we're looking to, to do with that project. Because I know we have a budget of, what, about $150,000 for that study?
Yes, Ms. Chairman. We wish we were further along on that one. You know, we, we had a draft scope of work just before Ms. Afewoki left the city, so back a year ago. So we were going to get started with the project, but then it got put on hold pending hiring the sustainability manager. And now that we have Afewoki back, we'll be initiating this project again. And I know she's starting to take a look at the scope of work. And, and we are adding actually on the equity also on this one. We are adding an element for equity into the Climate Action Adaptation Plan. And the goal is to get this advertised in three months timeframe and, and have it started by the fall of this year.
Okay, that's great. Thank you, Mr. Seth Raman. I think it's my hope in speaking on behalf of this commission that if there's anything within the scope of work of the Climate Action Plan that is a certain recommendation that hinges on the policies within our general plan, it may, I'm not saying it will be likely, but it may be likely that we need to massage certain aspects of the general plan language. So I don't know if there's a kind of a coordinated effort that while this study is going on, that you bring our planning staff on board as well to make sure everything's copacetic.
Yes, Ms. Chairman. Yeah, this is going to be a collaborative effort with many depart, all the departments in the city because it's, it's something that, you know, we need to rely on city council and the commissions to, to help us first set a goal for what we want it to be, right, the climate action goal to be. And then based on the goal here, policies that we need to, we need to have in place to achieve that goal. And, and it'll touch on every single department and definitely Planning Commission and through general plan amendments. So there is a very like, good likelihood that we will come to you for that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure how it's going to shape up long-term, Mr. Seth Raman. But also with discussion about the Fairview Developmental Center and that being a, you know, a very special site to the city in terms of the possibility of building whatever we end up building, if we get it, that I don't know if it's going to have to be a specific plan that will have its own climate or sustainability plan just for that site or if it's going to feed into the larger, you know, climate policy or sustainability policy that we have in the city as well. So I just want to be aware of, of that as we continue to talk about it. So thank you, Mr. Seth Raman. Moving on, if we turn to the next page under the facilities category, number 43, the Norma Herzog Community Center Roof Replacement. I'm trying to remember, the Herzog was built, what, two, a little less than two years, two years ago?
So, Ms. Chairman, the, it was remodeled, the interior only.
Interior only, okay.
We did not, we did not touch the roof on that, in the, in this, in that project. And, you know, hindsight, it's, it, we should have done it. We should have integrated the roof also along with that project. But anyway, that's the, it's something that we have to work on at some point.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, I didn't know if it was a new roof or not, but I was about to say two years for a new roof. That's, that's going to be expensive for us. But I will say, yeah, thank you, thank you for, for noting that. And I'll also note to anyone else who has not used the Herzog, it's a wonderful center. There, some of the best staff that we have in the city work there. And it's a great venue if you ever want to utilize that, that space. Let me just turn a couple, couple pages here. I think I know one or two commissioners that might appreciate this question. So if we go to Parkway's and Medians under 117, it's the tree planting program. I wanted to hear a little bit more about that because on this commission, if you didn't, you may or may not know, but the concept of trees has become progressively more important to us, especially as we approve certain, certain projects. And I see that we have a $50,000 budget per year, starting in fiscal year '24, '25, and then being projected out, you know, indefinitely from there. I didn't know if you could let us in on a little bit more on the tree program here in the city, Mr. Seth Raman?
Yeah, Ms. Chairman and commissioners, yeah, trees are very important to us. We are, of course, TCT USA. And while you don't see a budget number in this fiscal year, on the upcoming fiscal year, I believe there is some money that was budgeted as part of the operating budget. So, so there is some money allocated for tree program. Now, we plant trees not only as part of this particular project, but every single street project that we do has some tree elements in it. When we planted all the, when we installed Medians on, on Red Hill or on Placentia or Bristol or Harbor recently, I mean, every single project included trees. So, so, and more recently, when, you know, as part of the Placentia Avenue Parkway Improvement Project, we planted almost 30 trees along Placentia, south of Wilson Street. So it's something that we do as part of our other street improvement projects in addition to its own Parkway program.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seth Raman. And I'm, I think I can speak for Commissioner Zick because we both live in the same neighborhood. If we drive around the loop of Mesa Verde, we do have a lot of those older, mature pine trees that kind of line, line the drive. And I didn't know if there was a specific idea about what to do with the trees that are, you know, there's root intrusion on the sidewalk and we have some, you know, walkability issues along the loop. So I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
We, we do monitor for those issues. And pine trees are not as, as, you know, as, as impacting to sidewalks as, you know, the ficustis that we have outside our city hall. But our liquid amber trees, for that matter. But, but we do, you know, monitor for that. And wherever we have issues, we do replace sidewalks. We, we do our sidewalk grinding program. So, so we try to keep up on it and definitely we encourage people to report to us if they notice any, any such issues with sidewalks.
Yeah. And I, I don't know if you, if you happen to mention the My Costa Mesa app, but it's fantastic. I made a, an entry a few weeks back for a pothole right below the freeway. Guess what? It was done the next day. So very responsive.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Those are all my questions, Mr. Seth Raman. But I'd like to open it up to my fellow commissioners if they have any fellow, or if they have any further questions. Commissioner Zick?
Has this capital improvement program been presented to city council?
Yes, Commissioner Zick. We did present to city council in, I believe, April. Then we went to parks commission after that. It went to the Finance and Patient Advisory Committee twice. So, so we have made our rounds.
And did the city council approve it?
No, they will be approving. While they reviewed it and gave us some feedback on it, the formal approval will happen as part of the June meeting.
Thank you.
Adoption of the budget.
Then I do have one more question. Does your five-year plan include any consideration for the impact or needs that you would estimate would be on us based on the housing element update and the possible building of housing units that'll bring another 30,000 people to the city? Did you consider that in your capital plan?
So Commissioner Zick, that's, to achieve, to get to that level, it's going to be beyond the five-year plan. So it's something that is part of our general plan consideration, but not necessarily something that we do in the next five years. But, but we do have long-term plans for the city to handle the anticipated traffic load and also to improve our active transportation network. So we are hoping that a combination of those two should be able to address it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Anyone else? Commissioner Vavar?
Yeah, I just want a quick comment. Just thank you for presenting this to us. And I know that we as a city are continuing to focus on those active transportation projects as we heard in the housing element present, or the inclusion housing ordinance presentation that Costa Mesa's population tends either on the older side or on the younger side. So having, funding those projects to improve walkability for seniors and also for young families starting out in the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vavar. Commissioner Taber?
Yeah, I was instructed, as Adam suggested, that we're not really commenting on specific budget items. But I was pretty much a layperson that has a house and does repairs. Some of these numbers were a bit staggering. So I was just wondering, is there a metrics that you use when you're planning the budget allocation on how many citizens would benefit from a certain budget item? One thing I see is like $4.5 million for lighting at Davis School Field. And a few other items were like, wow, like, it's a pretty big chunk of change. And a few other items where like, wow, like, it's a pretty big chunk of change. Is there like a consideration like, oh, we know that 10,000 people a year are going to benefit from that? And so that kind of helps us inform our decision on where to spend the money?
So Commissioner Taber, it's a good question. Some of those projects are set by, as a council direction policy. So the improvements at Davis School and Kaiser Elementary, I think that's another one, that's a fairly large amount of money. Yeah, those are large projects that were envisioned in conjunction with school district to provide increased field opportunities. And a lot of our children take advantage of that. So there is, there is another study that's going on. So we base our improvement program on, on multiple studies, including like our general plan. Now, there is an open space master plan that's underway and it's going to be completed soon, but, and Fairview Park Master Plan is another one. So we use all these documents to figure out what improvements are needed. And these are in the five-year program, not necessarily the one-year program. So you see this Davis Field is, is actually not even in the five years, it says on the future column. So it's, it's something that's there, but not necessarily funded at this time.
Okay. Yeah, it just seems like there's a lot of things, just as a, again, just homeowner guy, half a million bucks for some locker room carpet and paint and different things that seem like, wow, like, I want to take care of our city staff, our police officers, but seems like a lot of dough. So I don't know. I guess my comment would be, I assume that everybody is on the same page of spending city money wisely, but from perspective of someone that doesn't walk in the, you know, governmental allocation type of projects, seems like there's big numbers here. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Taber. Anyone else? Vice Chair.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad, as you said, Mr. Seth Raman, there's other committees and commissions that have looked at these numbers. I'm not capable to, I'm glad the pressure's off of us to figure out whether they're correct or not. But I did look at the transportation, a lot of transportation lines, and it is very obvious that we're actively investing in active transportation in the city. Famous planner Brent Tadarian, he says, "The true aspiration of a city is not found in its vision statement, it's found in its budget." And when I look at all these active transportation projects, we're, we're on a roll, we're doing a good job. So in terms of what we're supposed to be doing right now and determining whether this is consistent with the general plan, I know our circulation element pretty well, and we do aspire to be a multimodal city, so I think, I think it looks good. That's it.
Right. Thank you, Vice Chair. All right. Unless anyone else wants to speak? Yeah, Commissioner Andrade.
Part of my desire to join this, this commission was coming off of parks, so I definitely have a soft spot for it. And also because being on the west side of Costa Mesa, we know, I mean, I don't need to tell you, right? The population to green space ratio is, is concerning. And really, it's, it's a cause for really having a serious discussion about environmental equity that we're providing our community on the west side. So I'm, I'm really happy to see that there's some meaningful investment on west side park development. It's a very general term. So maybe you can give us like some quick highlights on what, what exactly does it entail?
So Commissioner Andrade, it's, yeah, the parks needs in the west side are definitely, you know, we heard it from you, from city council and from Parks Commissioners too. And Billy, our city manager, is looking into creating a separate, actually a fund for, for acquisition of land in the west side for development of new parks. It's, as you know, it's, the land is scarce there. We don't have a lot of undeveloped land to take advantage of, but if there are opportunities, we want to be ready to, to take advantage of that. There are some opportunities right now, for example, along Victoria Corridor, we have pockets of larger leftover remnants of previous acquisition. That's, that's right now, it's basically landscape Parkway, but some of them are fairly large, which could be developed into small, smaller parks. So we have that as part of the Victoria Corridor Development Project, to implement some of those projects. And as you can notice, we have almost 15.4 million dollars of park improvements in the next fiscal year, most of that through grants that we received, and will be implementing a lot of those projects in the near future.
Thank you, that's, that's ways to hear. How about the, what's happening with, what are some of the plans for the West Side Park? The skate park?
At this point, the West Side Skate Park is not a project in our, in our one-year CIP. It's something that's in the five-year plan. And, and once we implement the current grant projects that we have, those are the projects that will be concentrated on in the next fiscal year.
Fantastic. And one thing I love, I like to add on this category is, I mean, see, it's, like you said, there's a category, there's a portion allocated for way down in the future for Wilson Park replacement of its existing bathroom. That is one of the very few parks that are walking distance for my family, so I'm familiar with the area. And I've also submitted a couple of MyCoast Mesa requests, so, which get addressed fairly quickly. But those bathrooms, I was actually very happy that they were made accessible recently. But it seems like it would be a much more, greater impact of an, of an investment, even for the future, of maybe considering repurposing all the, that sand volleyball court. In the time that I've been here, close to 10 years, I mean, I've never seen it utilized. And there's a huge amount of green space. So it could be just a great opportunity to really repurpose and really have a space for a lot of our youth. A lot of them are limited to Shalimar and Ketchum, which is, is also under great focus and has an opportunity for investment, but this would just give another access point for our youth. So if it can be, you know, maybe an opportunity in, in one of the, in the categories under parks would be fantastic, just for my local resident that uses the park frequently. So I really appreciate that. And then I also would echo Vice Chair's comments. It was really encouraging to see all the great investment and having a multimodal transportation, just making our streets more accessible. I know the city has made in partnership with the Police Department, great efforts on having some bike-to-school days, and those are just amazing. The kids, it's such a great way to engage the community at all levels. It's accessible to many kids and family. I mean, even for the kids that don't have a bike, parents were out there, even walking. So just having that, those safe spaces. I mean, we have to tag along with the police so they protect it, but knowing that we have, we will have in the future great accessibility and protection for people that want to bike and scoot and all those good things throughout the community. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Is that all? Okay, thanks. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Mr. Seth Raman, thank you so much for being here this evening. Ms. Rosales, Mr. Yang, if you'd like to add anything, you're certainly welcome to. What's, what's your favorite traffic engineering project that you have coming up? How about that?
I'm really excited about the Fairview project between Fair and Newport. I think that's going to be a really cool project.
Okay. Look forward to hearing all about it. Right, thank you. I think that's, that's all for us. Appreciate it. So I think we'll bring it to a vote then. I guess I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to approve the Consent Calendar Item Number Three, as written. Is there a second? Seconded by Toller, I have no further comments.
No further comments.
All right, thank you. We'll come to the vote, please.
That motion carries 7-0.
All right, thank you. Good luck, y'all. All right. That brings us to our public hearing. We have two public hearings tonight. And Anna, if you would, please read the title of Public Hearing, Item Number One, please.
Public Hearing Item Number One, Planning Application 22-14 and Tentative Parcel Map 2022-139 for a two-unit residential small lot subdivision development at 185 Rochester Street. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any expertise communications.
All right, thank you, Anna. Any expertise? All right. Seeing none, none for me either. So I will now turn it over to Mr. Ramondo to present the item. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jeffrey Ramondo, Assistant Planner with the Economic and Development Services Department. And the item before you tonight is Plan Application 22-14 and Tentative Parcel Map 2022-139, which is a request for a small lot subdivision located at 185 Rochester Street. Now, the project includes the request for approval of a design review and a tentative parcel map to facilitate a residential small lot subdivision to create two parcels and for the construction of a new detached residential unit on each parcel. The project proposes to demolish the existing single-family residential dwelling on the site. In addition, the project proposes site improvements, including new hardscape and landscaping. Now, for a little background on the site, the subject site is located on the south side of Rochester Street, between Newport Boulevard and Orange Avenue. And the property is zoned R2HD, which is multi-family residential district high density, and has a general plan land use designation of high-density residential. Now, the surrounding established neighborhood contains a mixture of single-family and multi-family residential units of an existing one-story multi-tenant commercial building located immediately adjacent to the east of the property. Now, here are a few site photos of the existing site. Now, you may not be able to see it clearly from the site photos due to the hedges around the front of the property. However, the site currently contains a single-family residence behind those hedges. Now, the project will involve demolishing the existing dwelling, including those existing hedges, to accommodate the new development. Tentative parcel map proposes to divide the 6,343 square foot parcel into two parcels of approximately 3,199 square feet and 3,009 square feet, which complies with the maximum density of one unit per 3,000 square feet of lot area. The tentative parcel map includes a three-foot sidewalk easement to sit here at the east side of the property, resulting in a net total lot square footage of 6,208 square feet. There's also a 13-foot wide private access easement on the front parcel for Unit One, which is also provided to allow access to the rear parcel for Unit Two. Now, staff has reviewed the proposed parcel map with the Costa Mesa Municipal Code and Subdivision Map Act, and has determined that the parcel map is in compliance with the respective regulations. Now, the proposed site plan includes two detached units. Each unit features a two-car garage and open parking immediately adjacent to the garages, resulting in the project providing the minimum number of parking as required by the code. The small lot project also proposes to provide 35.4% of open space, which complies with the minimum requirement of 35%. And each unit includes private open space areas with at least 200 square, with at least 207 square feet. Now, the, the project proposes two floor plans. Unit One features a total floor area of 2,081 square feet, with three bedrooms, two full bathrooms, and one half bathroom. Whereas Unit Two consists of a total floor area of 2,069 square feet and three bedrooms with three full bathrooms and one half bathroom. Now, each unit is designed with a large open living area on the first floor, consisting of living and dining area and a kitchen. Now, looking at the elevation and design of each unit, the project proposes a modern farmhouse design features, which is compatible with the immediate surrounding neighborhood because this neighborhood features a diverse collection of architectural styles, including other residences with modern, eclectic, and traditional influences. The proposed design meets the intent of the city's residential design guidelines as each unit has been designed with articulation and offsets on the various elevations. The front elevation for the front Unit One includes a second-story Juliet balcony, Eve overhangs, and an entry porch to provide visual interest and facade articulation facing towards Rochester Street. Each unit features a variety of projections and features, articulation on each wall plane with varying, varying roof types and materials. Building materials include a mixture of stucco, stone veneer, and vertical siding. In terms of neighboring privacy, consideration for design privacy has been provided in the locate, locating the windows on the property. The site diagrams on screen demonstrates that windows are located to eliminate direct views between proposed units, as seen in Site Diagram Section CC. In addition, a six-foot block wall is proposed to be constructed on the property line between neighboring properties, which would further eliminate any privacy impacts for the existing neighboring properties. Second-story windows facing south, east, and west are located without direct views into neighboring existing properties, as shown in Site Diagram Section AA and Section BB. In terms of landscaping, the code requires that all landscape areas consist of drought-tolerant plant material and shall meet the minimum number of plant types based on the total landscape square footage. Landscape area proposed for the site consists of 1,781 square feet. The proposed planning materials, such as trees, shrubs, and ground cover, coverage, are proposed to exceed the code minimum, as you can see on the table above. Staff has also included a condition that a final landscape plan will be reviewed with the building permit plan check and will need to comply with the water efficiency landscape ordinance. Condition as required by code, all parking, access, and walkways will be eliminated. Lighting will be reviewed for code compliance, compliance with the building permits submittal as well. And staff has also included a condition that a lighting plan and photometric study shall be required prior to issuance of a building permit to limit potential lights bill to surrounding neighbors. In addition to a variety of standard conditions, the project includes conditions such as window placement and privacy of neighbors, landscaping, onsite lighting requirements, and parking access and walkways, as well as comprehensive, a comprehensive utility plan, which will be submitted with building permits submittal. Now, in order to approve the project, the Planning Commission must make the required findings for tentative parcel map and design review. Staff has included proposed findings in the report. Now, the proposed design review for the residential small lot subdivision complies with the findings since the development standards comply with the zoning code and the proposed design of the new two-story units comply with the residential design guidelines. And the proposed tentative parcel map also complies with the findings since the subdivision and the proposed use is consistent with the zoning code and the general plan, and that there is adequate existing infrastructure to serve the two new units. With that said, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution to find that the project is technically exempt from CEQA and to approve planning application and tentative parcel map, subject to conditions of approval. Now, this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Now, the applicant wasn't able to attend today's meeting, but the architect is available on his behalf to answer any other questions.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Ramondo. I appreciate the presentation. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff? Starting with Commissioner Vohar.
Yeah, just one quick question. So there, I read something in the staff report that said that as one of the conditions would be to create an HOA and also that the parking, the garages that would belong to each property would need to be maintained clear. So I guess my question is, does this have to be approved with an HOA with it and too? I guess I'm wondering, what if somebody buys one of those houses and only owns one car or doesn't own a car and just wants to use the rest of the garage space as storage space? Can they do that? Can they do that?
Yeah, it's an interesting question. It's kind of a down-the-road question, really, when it comes to parking with regards to specifically how much parking is required. But with regards to your HOA question, I'll circle back to your parking question. There is a shared driveway and the small lot subdivision ordinance looks to the requirements of an HOA on multiple levels. In this situation, an HOA might benefit the two property owners for the maintenance of the common driveway, although it's just an easement. In other situations, it's more of an HOA scenario. With two properties, it's not so important, but the code requires it, so there might be some type of a legal instrument to regulate permanent maintenance of that and a shared responsibility. Going back to your parking requirement, again, the code would require that those spaces stay open in the garage specifically. There are opportunities to convert garages into ADUs. That might be a possibility, but from the perspective of if the space is a garage space, it needs to kept open.
So that's even if somebody doesn't own a car? By what you're saying, can't use that as storage?
Yeah, the current code does not allow for the use of storage for the parking garage.
Okay, well, maybe it's just me, but I think that maybe we as a government shouldn't really be interested in what people do with their property. So that's just me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vavar. Commissioner Zick.
Thank you. Help pick you back right where Commissioner Vavar left off by noting that condition of approval number seventeen specifically requires that the CCNRs include restrictions requiring residents to park vehicles in garage spaces. So Mr. Dropkin is right about the code, but more specifically, it's one of the conditions of approval requiring that. Interesting question or comment about what if a person didn't have a car seems like it might be unfair to prohibit them from using their garage as storage. But if you flip that question and say, well, what if they use it for storage, now they want to put their vehicles out on the public street, park in front of their neighbor's house? How fair is that? We have no restriction on that. I'm completely satisfied with this condition of approval. There's another condition of approval I've got a question about, and that's number seven. This one has always concerned me when we're talking about a development like this, and it's the condition that says that the property's ultimate finished grade could be as high as two-and-a-half-feet greater than the adjacent property. And if that were the case, the adjacent property would be looking at an eight-and-a-half-foot wall, the six-foot required wall that we have in condition of approval number five, plus the additional two-and-a-half-feet if this project is developed with a finished grade two-and-a-half-feet higher than the adjacent. My question is, why do we have this condition of approval? And telling me it's boilerplate isn't an answer I'm looking for. Do we not know what the applicant's intended grading plan is at this point?
Yeah, from a grading perspective, it really was involved more with regards to the purpose of this condition is from a grading perspective, not from a wall placement perspective. I wouldn't say that you're incorrect, Commissioner Zick, with regards to the potential of an eight-foot wall, like a face, eight-foot face. Generally, you can disguise an eight-foot wall with landscaping, so staff isn't necessarily concerned terribly with the additional two feet. But again, allowing a change in grade like that allows for improvements for proper drainage. It allows for preservation of existing grade conditions to not require massive amount of fill removal or what have you. So there are benefits to grading or not having as much grading or grading for the purpose of drainage, which I believe that this condition is really required for.
I think if you saw the height of the wall along Elm, behind the Mirror of All Developments, that additional couple feet is something that should be a cause for concern. But my question then is, do you know what the applicant's intended finished grade is for this development?
The plans do have the grade elevation on one of the plans. We can take a look at it. It varies from area of the site. So you might want to be able to go over that question with the applicant, or staff can assist with the site plan review as well.
All right, no further questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zick. Vice Chair.
Can you help me understand how the open space requirements are being fulfilled? Maybe pull one of the site plans on the screen. I see there's a separate requirement for each unit and then a overall or common space requirement, the thirty-five percent. And I guess even though they're separate parcels, it's been subdivided, is that open space going to straddle? Is that how it's intended to work, straddle those property lines?
So the minimum open space requirement takes a look at the entire development lot. And so the way the open space was calculated was based on the building footprint and the paving for the driveways would count against the open space area. So the way it was calculated was that the total lot size, the net of it, was sixty-two-oh-eight square-feet in total, and then subtracting the building square footages or building footprint square footages. So the building coverage had was twenty-eighty-eight square-feet, and then the driveway square footage we had was nineteen-twenty-one square-feet, which left the remaining open space square footage of twenty-one-ninety-eight square-feet, resulting in that thirty-five-point-four percent open space requirement.
So it's just unbuilt area, really, right? So the concrete driveway and the pads in front of the garages, that counts as just open space pre-subdivision for counting the whole lot as it is now?
So the driveways would count against the open space square footage. If that makes sense. So the building footprints and the driveways lean to the garages would count against the open space square footage.
So basically, any areas that are paved cannot be included as open space?
So the thirty-five percent is, I guess, on attachment? The first page of what we have up here. It's behind the lot in the back. It's behind both units. There's a couple little spaces. Those are doubling as the private and the private that's required per unit and then the overall that's required for the whole project, like pre-subdivision, I guess. The hatched area on...
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Anyone else? All right, I might have a question or two here, Mr. Raimondo and Director Dropkin. So I would like to just touch on the fact that this property was built in nineteen-twenty-four. There was a nice attachment here in the staff agenda that discussed the appropriateness of this property being listed or not being listed in the National Registry. If you could, just for the public's knowledge, just give us a quick rundown as to why a property that's a hundred years old is not being listed as an asset within this city. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I can provide some insight on that. So just before two thousand, the city went out and hired a consultant to review for historic resources in the city. During that time, they evaluated many structures. They did it by date of building construction, and during that time, they had a trigger year where they looked at all of these projects. Many of them were on this street, actually, as you can tell by this attachment, because many of these sites throughout Costa Mesa, they have patterns of older development. This was obviously an area of that review. And with regards to that, they looked at during that consultant review criteria listed by the state. And the state historical significance criteria, it includes four criteria for determining that a structure is historic. I can read them if you'd like. They're interesting. If not, I can...
Sure, why not? I'm sold now.
In this situation, I can go ahead and parrot them specifically off of the code. And what it is, is the first one is it's associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of local or regional history or cultural heritage of California or the United States. So that might be something, you know, where there was a situation like in the South where there was a war or some type of an event that occurred. So that might be something like that as an example. It is associated, the next one is associated with lives of persons important to local California or national history. For example, it could have been a president or some other past historic superstar in our local area or federal or United States of America area. And then it embodies, and then from a structural perspective, it embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type of period, region, or method of construction, or represents the work of a master possesses and possesses high artistic values. So that's the third one. And then the fourth one is, and the last one, it is yielded or have the potential to yield information important to the prehistory or history of the local area, California or the nation. So that's the criteria that the state requires staff to look at, and we're also looking that from the perspective of CEQA, which requires us to look as an environmental resource, as an environmental resource as well. Under the state requirements, there's DPR forms, which allows you to look at a certain project area and classify it. On that handout, there's a list of different state-regulated DPR evaluation codes. And the evaluation code for this property, when PCR, an historic consultant service consultant, did the citywide historic survey, they found it eligible for the six-Z-one classification code, which basically means found eligible for listing in the National Register, found ineligible for listing in the National Register, with no potential for any listing. So knowing that and having the resource, we were able to discount it from as being an historic resource. Sorry about the long-winded, but it kind of flows out that way.
No, it's fascinating. Thank you for sharing it. And just to be clear, there is nothing in the Costa Mesa General Plan or City Code that would automatically trigger a preservation of a particular site that was built in a particular year, certainly not nineteen-twenty-four in this case.
Right, nothing automatically requires you to declare that it's historic resource, but based on a fifty-year requirement, we still need to look at it from the perspective of historicity.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Dropkin. That was great. Next question, I'll move it on to condition of approval number sixteen, discussing the driveways and the parking areas and their finishing. One of the things that stuck out to me, and I don't know why it hasn't really come to me in the past when we've considered other small lot subdivisions, but why we do not maybe possibly more highly encourage permeability on-site through pavers instead of just straight
So there are many cities that have pervious surface requirements. The city actually does have a quasi-impervious surface requirement with regards to our water quality management requirements and specifically with regards to the type of development that's being proposed. So when a project triggers a WQMP, which is a Water Quality Management Plan, it requires a certain amount of impervious surfaces and drainage that can percolate into the soil at a certain rate.
And those are for developments of a particular size, right? And this has not met that threshold?
Correct.
Gotcha. So anything that potentially runs off of this property is going right into the storm drain?
Yes.
Potentially, or evaporating?
Yes, correct, yeah. But I will say that in this situation, I did look at it from that perspective when I was originally reviewing the project, and the landscaping requirement also accounts for the pervious surfaces on the site. And in this situation, it accounts for about twenty-seven percent of the lot, or seventeen-hundred-and-eighty-one square-feet, as the staff report indicates. So given the fact that it's twenty-seven percent of the overall lot size, I feel like there is a lot of impervious surfaces that will account for drainage to not fall off-site.
And to, thank you, Director Dropkin, and to revisit what Mr. Raimondo mentioned earlier, they're exceeding the minimum requirement for permeability on-site, correct? I don't think they're just meeting it, they're exceeding it at twenty-seven percent, aren't they?
Yeah, I don't know. I know that the site is in compliance. I don't know how much more it is.
Okay, that's okay. All right, I think that's all for me. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Andrade.
So just kind of going off of the point of, you know, the original site, as old as it is, is there any other adjustments that the city needs to make or the applicant needs to take in consideration to be able to handle whatever sewage is coming out into, you know, out of occupancy of now two units as opposed to a single-family home? Like, do the drain pipes need to be upgraded as well? Are they also from the thirties? How does that work?
No, that is a wonderful question, and we do send the project over to our Public Works Department, and they review it from an engineering perspective and all the proper-sized for the adequate lateral to go into the street and to provide the adequate sewer requirements. That's all checked out, basically, before the project comes to this point.
Right, awesome, awesome. And I see there's a lot of conversation about, you know, once the owner is ready to, you know, provide or rent out, do we know if they're leaning more into rentals, into property homeownership, or is there any consideration on that space?
Yeah, I think that you would have to talk to the applicant about that, what their future issues are. But the purpose of the small lot ordinance is to create ownership. But again, you could rent a property that you own as well, so.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? All right, seen none. Mr. Raimondo, Mr. Dropkin, thank you so much. Appreciate it. I'll now open up the public hearing and ask the applicant or their representative to come up. Yes, sir? And if you could please state your name and let us know if you've read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and do you agree to them?
Yes. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. My name is Stephen Chin. I'm the designer of the project. I agree on the condition that was presented. And to add on to this project, my client, the owner's not here today, but he just recently got married and raising a small family, and that's his goal and vision to create more housing, this project like this, to create more small houses for small, young family to start with. To answer is for rental or sale, I'm not sure yet, but I think this is only two units, two houses. Either he's going to sell it. It's really based on what the market and how he can get financial recently because of the interest rates. It's a little bit tricky right now, so I probably can get an answer for you later on after he come back from his honeymoon, but I think we don't have the answer for now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chin. I don't know if I missed it earlier. Did you read the conditions of approval, and do you agree?
I agree, yes.
You do? Okay, great, thank you. All right, you're certainly welcome to make a short presentation if you'd like. Otherwise...
No, I think Planner Chair very did a good job. Thank you.
All right, great. In that case, Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Zick.
So, Mr. Chin, you understand my interest in the finished grade of your site, and I'm looking at your drawing C2. It appears that you're within maybe a foot of the adjacent site.
Right, that's what I'm checking, and I was here to kind of, to clarify that between the two lots, the, the adjacent lot with the R2 and the AP side, we're about like six inches to eight inches the most different, the height. So for the fence difference, it won't be that substantial. And I think six feet, it really depends on which side you measure and understand where your concern coming from. If it is two feet different from the other side, it's eight feet to that expect. So I think for that fence, it's only one purpose, or actually two purposes, security and the privacy. So it's not to create a, a kind of like the high wall situation. So if the planner is okay, we can always discuss which side benefit the most and would that be an issue for the over the side, the high issue for the six-foot fence?
So in the course of you working with staff, did you at any point request the grading allowance of up to 30 inches?
No, the, the whole design intent is to preserve as much as we can on the existing grade because digging or raise it up, it's just more money you dump into it. You probably don't get that much in the return, so it's not financially interest for the project. And also to answer the, the drainage, we try to provide more landscape area or permeable space so we can preserve or we can contain the most storm drain water on site so we don't have to discharge to the, the public sewer or the storm drain lines.
Okay, and then I had another question still on that page. And I'll just use the southwest corner of the lot. You're showing a finished grade of 102 feet and a top of wall of 105.7. Why am I not seeing a six-foot difference?
You mean down to the southwest corner?
The southeast corner is something similar. Top of wall 106, finished grade 102, only four feet difference. So I might be missing something.
Right, right. Well, that's something I need to double check with my sub-engineer. And I do see 106 throughout the whole south side of the wall to 106. And we do have a drop to 102 at the front within the front property line. The, the main reason for that was try to create a more neighborhood-friendly gesture that we don't have six-foot high wall all the way to the front property line. So we cut back down to lower, I believe it's like a three feet or four feet for that. It's just for a little buffer for landscaping and water too. So on, at the front of the size, the front setback, we have a lower wall at that portion.
Yeah, and I'm looking at the back end of the property.
The back end too?
The southwest and southeast corners.
That's a 106. Oh, you said, you mean the 105.7 and 106 high difference?
Top of wall 105.7.
Be honest with me, I'm not quite sure why is that. I can double check with my engineer, but it might be, just like you say, we, we try to account that couple inches difference from the neighbor's side on our side to make the six-feet highest CMU wall is the highest point from either side of the grading. But I can double check that to, to make sure.
That could make sense, what you're explaining. What wouldn't make sense is how that squares with your condition of approval number five that says that you shall install a six-foot-high decorative block wall. Doesn't suggest that six foot from one side versus the other.
Right, that's something I need to work with the staff to identify, you know, from the six feet, are we looking our property side on the finished grade or on the, on the neighbor's side? So it's like six-foot-high maximum is on which side of the property.
Thank you for your answers.
Is it all Commissioner Zick? Okay, real quick, just to build on what Commissioner Zick was saying earlier, do we have an answer for that line of questioning? As far as working with staff to make sure that everything ends up with six feet at its level? We can, we can revisit this too, Director Dropkin.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I'm sort of trying to address where that provision. I know there is a requirement, and it was, it was a little bit odd coming into the city to see that there was a wall height requirement. Typically, they're not. It's a privacy type of an issue. Sir, it's associated with, but I just wanted to see how it's written before I could account more.
Okay, you got it.
Right, I'm almost there.
You got it. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? All right, yes, Commissioner Andrade.
So I really love all the, the great landscape and how, you know, learning about the absorption of it and all of that, and that you're focusing on having drought-resistant plants and shrubbery and all of that, agave. Is there any consider, you know, and on that same vein of, you know, water conservation, right? Because we live in California and we face quite a bit of a challenge to, I don't know how much grass is actually planned to be installed, but we know that grass is such a huge, you know, requires so much maintenance and water and fertilizer and all that stuff, which doesn't really align with, you know, water conservation.
Yes, to answer your question, we actually limit the, the grass area very much. I think we only have the front portion within about like, not more than 200 square feet for that. It's for the cur, appeal, looking from the street side. But the rest of it will be the drought tolerance plans and everything in the back. So that's only for the front.
Yeah, so would the designers have any, do any consideration?
Yeah, that's a part of the consideration. We only keep the front part as the grass area. The rest of it is not.
Sounds good, okay.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Director Dropkin, did you have an answer at this point?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that, that is, that is a code requirement. It's within the general development standards as far as the, the master development lot. So it's, so it's referenced to as a code. It is a requirement that it has, it be six-foot high and opaque. So it is a code requirement, and that's why the applicant would have to comply with it. It would be some type of an exception to not comply with it. I don't know if this has ever been applied for with regards to an exception. The only thing that I can consider and to respond to Commissioner Zick's question would be that this was a privacy issue, like I said, for the neighboring properties unless the properties, unless the actual development property.
Okay.
So that would be the intention, I should say.
Okay, thank you, Director Dropkin. Commissioner Zick, do you have any further questions in this vein? All right, seeing none. Mr. Chen, thank you so much. You're welcome to take a seat. Thank you for, for being up here with us. I will now open the floor for public comments. If you'd like to speak on this item, please come forward to either podium. All right, seeing none. Hannah, if you can go to Zoom or telephone?
No, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
All right, no comments. I'm going to close the public comment portion of the public hearing and ask Commissioners, do you have any further questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none. Mr. Chin, do you have any closing comments you'd like to make? Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any further questions for staff? No? Okay. I will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Would someone like to make a motion, please? Motion made by Commissioner Tabor. What is your motion, Commissioner?
I'm going to find the project categorically exempt from SEQA and approve planning application 22-14 and parcel map 20-04, tentative parcel map 2022-139, subject to conditions of approval.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Tabor. Is there a second? Second by Vice Chair Toller. Commissioner Tabor, do you, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I say, Mr. Chin, thanks for showing up. Looks like a great project. Seems like it's going to be a great addition to the community. So thank you and thank your client and tell them happy honeymoon.
Vice Chair Toller.
Yeah, thank you. Also, happy honeymoon because you'll probably be watching this later. I, I have mixed feelings about this project. I think the applicant did a great job in taking an opportunity. There's money on the table. You could, small lot ordinance allows you to get a couple more units and make a profitable flip here. My, my comments are more internal in terms of what we're trying to do as a city. So we just had a meeting about our acute affordability crisis in the city. And the difference between, I know we do have goals in our city to increase homeownership opportunities. And single-family homes can command a high dollar, much higher than what rent could get right now. The gap is almost unprecedented. So in light of that, what the outcome we're getting due to our, our policy and our standards is we're effectively, we're losing a, it's called a NOA, a naturally occurring affordable house, you know? Naturally occurring affordable housing. The rent, you know, mortgage was nothing 100 years ago it was built. So rent was probably cheap, and now we're getting, I don't know, it's none of my business how much these are going to go for, but I would guess a million or so. And you, you'd need to make close to a quarter million a year and have maybe something close to that to put down in cash to buy one of those. So we're, you know, this is not a criticism, but I want to think as, you know, someone in the city that's charged with thinking about these things, what are our policies resulting in? And so we're getting two new single-family homes, and it's in high density. The general plan is high density. I don't know if you know this corner, this, this is a really cool spot. There's four corners at that intersection, and each of those is a historic, stuff we don't allow anymore, neighborhood scale, neighborhoods serving retail or office spaces. And man, you think about the potential for that. If those could develop and grow and be places where people that are kind of stuck in a, just a sea of residential and nowhere to go, nowhere to get their, you know, daily needs. Not that a violin shop satisfies your daily needs, but that opportunity is there. And so it makes sense that high-density residential is, is designated around a cool little neighborhood intersection like that, that could grow into a vibrant center. But I feel like we've turned some dials up for the potential of that site. Density, we've allowed more density, right? So it's like 14 or something per, dwelling units per acre. And the small lot ordinance relaxes some of the standards like open space and stuff. So you could, you could actually make it work. And so what we end up with are, like, there's nothing wrong with a single-family home. And while I'm talking about that, there's nothing wrong with a flat either, or owning or renting. Everybody should be happy and proud with their living situation. But there are certain qualities of a single-family home that make it such. I would start with a door and a window. You can see, just close your eyes and imagine a house. You ask a kid to draw a house. There's, there's a front door, there's maybe a stoop, there's a window. That's what a house looks like. Now, we've got one house right behind another house, kind of like a donkey suit arrangement. And it's, I feel like there's a certain point, you get to a certain density, and you should be, it needs to click up to the next level. That's why historically, pre-war buildings, there were duplexes, triple-deckers, sixplex flats, you know? And this is a challenging site, to be fair. So that's something we need to think about as a city. It's 40 by 140. So you could do a Boston triple-decker there, but that couldn't compete with the kind of money you could get for a single-family home. So I don't know how we need to balance that kind of policy. But if we're, if we're trying to achieve housing goals through, through these sorts of, you know, the policies that are governing this site, this is not the way we want our neighborhoods to grow, I don't think. I don't think we want a bunch of single-family homes crammed unnaturally, facing every which way on these little lots that were designed for one house. If, if we're going to grow, we need to, well, depending on the policy direction for the neighborhood, I feel like we need to get our, our allowances such that the next natural product type, flats or whatever, that can pencil and compete with the kind of money that a single-family home flip or a double single-family home flip can allow, then, then we're, then we're on the right track. But as it is now, we're kind of like trying to have our cake and eat it too. And I, I would think, this last comment, I would think, why don't we allow more? Why do we stop at 15 units to the acre? Why do they crank up some dials, but not height, not enough height to make something bigger work? We would probably say, kind of like Mr. K, neighborhood character, protect the neighborhoods. But if you look at this thing, all you see is garages. You can't even see the front door. It's like 15 feet behind the garage. There's concrete everywhere. There's, there's, there's eight parking spots on the tiny little site. And that's, that's the, that's the result. When we are, when we're committed to conventional parking requirements that took us through the 60s and 70s and 80s and committed to keeping those, this is the sort of thing we get, with this kind of runoff, these kind of garage-dominated frontages. So anyway, all of this is internal. Just because we're up here, it's planning commission night. Hopefully, some people are taking notes. But those are my thoughts. And, but to the applicant, congratulations. You made a good project out of this with what you had to deal with. A 40-foot lot's challenging, and it looks good.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Zick.
I'll be supporting this motion. You know, we have some competing interests in the city. They're hard to balance, and they're hard to achieve all the competing interests at the same time. We have an interest in more housing. You're delivering it. And we don't like it, though. Why? Because we say it might not be affordable. Well, we have a competing interest for affordable housing. So we'd rather maybe in this case, keep a dilapidated 80-year-old property, rather than upgrade and have two brand-new homes that people can buy. Really, that, that's what we're saying to you? We had a council member suggest that we don't want developers to upgrade and improve existing rundown multifamily housing in the city because it would raise rents. We'd rather keep dilapidated housing that's cheaper because we want affordable housing. That's a competing interest. Kind of neighborhood you want? Affordable, dilapidated. You can have both of those if that's what you want. We want more rental. We don't want your ownership property. Why? I don't have a clue. Our city is 60% rental, 40% owned. The rest of the county is the other way around. We have plenty of rental. Why would be looking for more rental in the city? We're upside down with rental. We don't have enough ownership opportunities. You're creating that. I applaud that. Good luck.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Rojas, any comments? Okay, Commissioner Andrade? Okay, Commissioner Tabor? Oh wait, you made the motion. Commissioner Vivar?
I think I partly agree with Commissioner Zick and with Vice Chairman Toller in that I, I don't think we should be focusing as much space on, on cars. And again, this kind of silly requirement in the code that, or the, whatever it is that people have to keep their garage space open, for what? If they don't have a car, you know, or they'd have one car and could use the rest of it for storage space, why not? I, I think we talk a lot about in the city about how do we find creative ways to use the land that we do have? And so if that means somebody who doesn't own a car being able to use that space as storage space, well, why not? And I also think that while rental properties are important and do allow more housing to be built in the city, I think it's more appropriate in areas of the city that are closer to major thoroughfares and the access to public transportation that that can afford. And if projects like the OC Streetcar or whatever come to Costa Mesa, allowing those multi, larger, higher-density residential projects, rental properties to be located close to transit to allow people who maybe just have enough for rent but wouldn't have enough for a car to be able to use public who maybe just have enough for rent, but wouldn't have enough for a car, to be able to use public transportation and when in the future, public transit systems become more widely available and, and easier to use, more choices, and in sort of our walking and walk, walkability and bikeability goals as a city that we have. So while rental properties are important, I also think that as a city, allowing for starter homes to be built, smaller places that can be bought out, can be bought by a family starting out, are important as well, because while renting is good, because it gives you a place to live, and maybe lets you, whether you live in a city like Costa Mesa, whereas maybe purchasing wouldn't, for those residents who would have the, the, um, the funds and capital to be able to purchase a home in the city, I think we need to be encouraging that kind of development. If you take a look right now in Onzolo Realtor, Redfin, whatever you want, and try to find a three-thousand-square-foot lot property in Costa Mesa, they're not there. Everything else is six, six thousand square foot, seven thousand, eight thousand. And, for an old property, for an old house, why not tear that down and build two homes and be able to sell to people who are starting out? So I, I think this is good. I think this is allowing for a higher, for a bigger mix of housing types in the city and, and property types, and taking some of those older homes that don't seem to have historical significance, and allowing for those large properties to be used by, to be divided into two homes, because I think we have another issue in, kind of the, the way that real estate works, is that people increasingly have bigger homes and properties, but increasingly smaller family sizes, so why not allow for smaller homes to be built to accommodate that cultural trend? So, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. I'll end things here by mentioning that I am supporting the, the motion. I think this is a great project. I do believe it is your second time here, Mr. Chin, isn't it? You were here just within the last year under a similar project with a similar aesthetic as well. I think we redesigned a couple finishings on the facade on that one. I think this looks really good, I share a lot of sentiments with my fellow commissioners, but I will say, out of an abundance of caution, that we, as a commission, do channel a lot of these policy ideas and the visioning for the city and the forum that's probably best for it, which currently is the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Joint Sessions that we have with City Council. I think what we are envisioning is coming to fruition, I think through several meetings that we will have with City Council. But where we're at right now, I do believe that splitting this lot feeds into this greater purpose of creating additional housing opportunities within the city. Whether or not that reflects ultimately what we decide is gonna, it's gonna come at a later point, but it's not here right now. So, I wish you good luck, and I think we'll look forward to seeing you again at some point, Mr. Chin. So, unless anyone else has anything else to add? Okay, Anna, if we could bring up the vote, please.
That motion carries six, one, with Commissioner Vivar voting no.
Sorry, I meant to vote yes, the second time that happened, sorry.
It's okay.
It's okay, no problem.
Should we take it again, Anna, or, okay? All right.
That motion carries seven, zero.
All right, all green lights at this time. Thank you, Commissioner Vivar, thank you, Anna. All right, Mr. Chin, and to your applicant who's hopefully watching right now, good luck. This decision is final unless appealed to City Council within seven days, thank you. All right, with that said, let's go ahead and take a quick five-minute break, and we'll see you back here shortly, thank you.
All right, welcome back to the Planning Commission meeting of May 22, 2023. I call the meeting back into order. And Anna, if you would, please read public hearing item number two.
Public hearing item number two, planning application 22-04 for conditional use permit to operate a retail cannabis storefront business with delivery located at 2790 Harbor Boulevard, Suites 107, 109, and 115, From the Earth. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
All right, thank you, Anna. We'll start to my left, Commissioner Taber.
No.
All right, Commissioner Vavar?
I had a conversation with one of the tenants at 2790 Harbor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rojas.
None.
Commissioner Zick?
I had a conversation this afternoon with James Dewey, who is the attorney that sent in this letter representing the client.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Andrade, okay, Vice Chair, and I haven't under report either. So I'll now turn it over to Mr. Aldana to present the item. Mr. Aldana.
Good evening, Chair Erith and Commissioners. I'm Christopher Aldana, Assistant Planner here at the Economic and Development Services Department. So to date, the Planning Commission has reviewed 21 applications for cannabis storefronts. Approved conditional use permits are shown in green in the image above, and the project before you tonight is in blue. This request is for a conditional use permit to establish and operate a cannabis storefront retail facility with delivery within an existing 2,188 square foot tenant space located at 2790 Harbor Boulevard, Suite 107, 109, and 115. The proposed business name is From the Earth. The property is owned Local Business District C1. The required state license for the proposed cannabis business includes type 10 storefront retailer. Under the type 10, the storefront retailer can also deliver cannabis goods. In November of 2018, non-medical adult-use cannabis became legal in California under Prop 64. In 2020, voters approved Measure Q to allow retail cannabis uses in the city. In June of 2021, City Council adopted ordinances. The applicant has completed the initial steps of the cannabis business application process, which include the pre-application, the cannabis business permit application, and conditional use permit application. If the CUP is approved tonight, the applicant would continue on to the remaining steps, including building permits, cannabis business permit, and obtaining a business license. As mentioned, the project site is located at 2790 Harbor Boulevard, Suite 107, 109, and 115, in a commercially zoned property. The 41,500 square foot property has existing onsite improvements, which consist of landscaping, off-street parking, and trash enclosures. The three-story multi-tenant building includes a mix of uses that include retail, restaurants, and professional services. There is residentially zoned property to the east across Peterson Place. The subject property includes 49 parking spaces plus one proposed bike rack, for a total of 50 recognized parking spaces, and has a shared parking agreement with four adjacent properties, for a total of 247 existing spaces. Here are site photos, which show the current condition of the building. The building was constructed in the mid-1960s and is currently occupied by a variety of uses. In general, the project consists of a interior tenant improvement and limited modifications to the exterior of the building, which include updating windows and doors, and adding a bike rack to encourage multimodal transportation. No additional square footage is proposed. The location of the business is on the first floor and is shaded in orange in the image above. The three tenant suites would combine into one through the tenant improvement process. The main customer entrance and exit for the proposed business is located along Harbor Boulevard. The proposed loading and unloading area is highlighted yellow and is approximately 80 linear feet from the access control door. Storefront and delivery operations would be open between 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. One licensed security guard will be on-site 24 hours a day, and any shipments of cannabis goods may only be accepted between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. The proposed floor plan includes two main areas, the retail storefront and the back-of-house employee-only area. The back of the house is for retail storefront storage, deliveries, and employees. The retail storefront is highlighted green on the floor plan, and the back of the house is highlighted red on the floor plan. The entrance and exit is located to the west of the suite. As proposed in condition, video surveillance cameras would be installed on the interior and exterior of the building with direct views of the loading and unloading area. As conditioned in the resolution, cannabis products will be transported securely from the licensed premise to the delivery vehicles via the limited access entry, and the delivery vehicles will also be equipped with secure storage areas for cannabis products. The applicant provided a detailed business plan that was evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant, which is not attached to the staff report since it contains proprietary details. However, the business plan describes the owner's professional experience, proof of capitalization, pro forma, and day-to-day operations. The applicant also provided a professionally-prepared security plan, which was reviewed by Costa Mesa Cannabis Consultant, HDL, who determined that appropriate security measures were included to address city and state requirements. Included into the CUP are more than 45 standard conditions of approval related to cannabis storefronts. For example, onsite consumption is prohibited, age restrictions are implemented for customers and employees, and compliance with state regulations and requirements for CBP renewal are required. There are a few conditions of approval that are specific to this project. For example, the applicant proposes to limit onsite sales and delivery to hours between 9:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. There are also conditions intended to reduce potential noise. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt and approve the project subject to the conditions of approval. The applicant has also prepared the presentation for commission tonight. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Aldana. That was fantastic. Appreciate it. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff on this item? Commissioner Zick?
Thank you. Two quick questions. Could you first turn to page two of your presentation, the one that showed the map? Thank you. Thank you. For some reason, I was under the impression that there were two approved CUPs existing in the shopping center, and you're only showing one.
Yeah, I think the map is aired, actually. Now that I'm looking at it, that 2845 shouldn't be there.
No, I'm not talking, I'm sorry. You might be right about that. I think that one was approved also. I think 2801, next to the watch business, that was approved. I recognize that.
That was one, yeah.
2845, I recognize that one as having been approved, but I'm talking about in this shopping center on the south side of Adams. You showed 2710 as being approved. I believe there's another one that was approved.
Commissioner Zick?
It was delivery only, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
Commissioner Zick? But it's retail, correct?
It is delivery only. It is a retail storefront, but we have not been, I'm sorry, it's delivery only. So we have not been including those on this map. If you wish to start, you know, we'll let our folks on the GIS team know.
I'd be interested in that.
Okay, noted. Thank you.
Thank you. And then my second question, on page 13, the conditions of approval. This is a one that says specifically, "Business identification signage shall not include any reference to cannabis, whether in words or symbols." And I'm looking at this illustration that has the name From the Earth, and right below it has the word dispensaries. And it would seem to me that the word dispensaries would be a violation of that condition of approval.
That's correct. That would not be part of the signed requirements.
Okay. Then thank you for clarifying that. I think my only request then would be, in the future, if the applicant has documents that are not in compliance with our requirements, that they fix them and then resubmit. But thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Is that all, Commissioner Zick? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Taber?
Mr. Aldana, can you show me when they park in that highlighted spot to deliver product? What's the path they take to get into the establishment from there?
So they would park, and then they would, without any product, walk to the business and notify them that they've arrived. And then the security guard would walk back with them. And then they'd go in through the double doors, which are on this slide, through the limited access entry.
So?
So if we go back to the first line, they could choose. They could either go around towards Adams Avenue to the main entrance, or they can go around.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. They have to walk all the way down to Adams, all the way over to Harbor?
Yeah, because the common corridor, they would need access to get into that common corridor, so they would walk around the building until they have either the security guard or one of the associates, retail associates, that have the access to walk them through that corridor into the limited access entry.
So at the back of the suites that they're proposing that they lease, like the end of the brown box where it says "not a part," are you saying somehow there is a door that goes to their unit from the parking lot side?
No.
So there's no way to enter their establishment except for the two doors on Harbor?
No. You see where it reads multi-tenant access?
Yeah.
So that's actually a corridor that you can see from the main entrance along Harbor. So it's that entry right there underneath the banner.
Okay, so the backside's on the parking lot side?
Exactly. The backside has a very similar entrance, so that corridor goes all the way from Harbor to the backside. But to access that corridor, they need an associate that has the key fob to enter.
So can you go back to where it was the highlighted parking spot? Oh, I'm sorry, that's not on my screen. Okay, I see. So they can go down to, so would there be a problem leaving a quantity of product in a car while they go try to walk around, get the attention of a security guard to let them in and back? That seems troublesome, that product would be left in a car.
They could always communicate via phone call in the range of time to be met outside.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Taber. Is that all?
Actually, one more question. There's a suit shop on that corner forever. Do you know if they decided to leave because the owner of the building was trying to entertain this proposal, or did they just decide to close up shop?
I don't know the history.
They were closed for the last couple of years, from what I can tell.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was after this measure passed, and the building owner was trying to make way to entertain a cannabis retailer, or were they already just?
You'd have to ask the applicant that.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Taber. Anyone else? Commissioner Rojas?
Yeah, two quick questions for you. Staying on slide seven here. So I'm looking at the parking layout here, and I see the property line. So I did see some concerns regarding the parking situation here. And is it, and I don't know if this is for you, I think it might be more for the applicant, but it's conceivable that once these lots get filled, and I'm very familiar with this lot here, I do see it full during the days, but what's to prevent them from going into the other lot that's connected by that driveway there? Or do we have an agreement from the proposed tenant to make sure that they monitor that so that it doesn't overflow into the other Pizza Hut area and the other shops that are there?
That's right, Commissioner Rojas. There's a shared parking agreement with all the parcels. So it's an access agreement where if you're shopping in one side of the, you know, if you're shopping, for instance, at this retail location, and you wanted to walk over and pick up a pizza at the Pizza Hut, you could do so. Or if you wanted to, you know, re-enter your vehicle and drive back down to the bank, you could do that as well.
Yeah, that's fine. I was just thrown off where I see property line cut off. I'm like, okay, are we doing that on purpose, or what's the story there? Second question is, I know I did see some of the comment there that there's a beauty salon there, and is that person leaving willingly, or do we know what the situation is with that business?
So there is a tenant that's currently at that location. From my understanding, they're on a lease agreement, but the applicant would probably be able to provide you with more details as to what the arrangements are with that tenant. But in one of the tenant spaces, there currently is a tenant.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner Vavar?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So Land Use Policy 1.1 states, "Encourage a mix and balance of commercial goods and services." And so that really sticks out to me in this case because what we're doing is we're combining three units, which includes the removal of an existing business to create another business that'll take up a significant part of the first floor of this building. And not only that, but it would also take up a significant part of its street frontage visible from two major streets. And so I was wondering if you considered the incompatibility of the proposed business with Land Use Policy LU 1.1?
So staff has reviewed that land use policy. It does say, "Provide for the development of a mix and balance of housing opportunities, commercial goods and services, and employment opportunities, et cetera, et cetera." One of the considerations that staff has reviewed for, we've checked into our economic information and considered typically for any retail good, what is a standard amount of stores that are throughout the city? And what we've come up with, like for instance, how many pizza shops, how many retail shoe stores, how many restaurants are kind of a different thing, but restaurants goes way beyond this number. But typically, we're finding that there's approximately 34 storefronts for a typical retail item, like a specific good. So with regards to that saturation level, that's sort of insinuated in that provision, we feel comfortable that we're still under that.
So you're saying that staff sees no problem with there being the 20, I believe it's a 27 square foot cannabis storefront stizzy, which just opened up, referenced earlier in the meeting, as well as the one at 2801. And there's also another one proposed at 2800, and I believe one further down the street at 2845, which you also alluded to. So does that not strike you as that not being a mix and balance of goods and services at this intersection?
I think that there's similar uses that are scattered through that area that also have duplications. So again, the ordinance was written without a saturation requirement, without a distance between the stores, without a total number. So, you know, there was lots of standards written into this ordinance. The bar has been raised relatively high from the perspective of compliance with those standards, and staff finds that this project is in compliance with those. There was discussion about the issue that you're speaking of in regards to the adoption of the ordinance when the Planning Commission initially reviewed that, and the recommendation counted forward towards a recommendation to require distances and to require saturation, and a lot of other different requirements. And what was approved was not that.
Because the other thing in reading as well, Land Use Policy LU 6.15 says to kind of foster a incubation of new industries and commercial districts throughout the city. And what I'm seeing here with these Measure Q facilities, it almost starts to seem like Measure Q district in Costa Mesa. So is that what, is that what this policy intends to kind of create that kind of area of the city, like a cannabis district, so to speak?
So I'm sorry, Commissioner Vavar, you mentioned Policy Land Use 2.5.
No, 6.15.
Oh, 6.15.
It's in the staff report.
Promote unique and specialized commercial and industrial districts within the city which allow for incubation of new growing businesses and industries.
Yeah, and I guess the word I'm trying to, district is what pops out to me.
Well, certainly, this would be, one could argue that this is a unique and specialized industry. It's a growing business and a growing industry.
And the district as well, right? Possibly?
It's along a commercial corridor.
Okay. And then regarding Policy 6.1, which, so Objective 6B in the staff report says something about increasing the city's revenue basis. But then, I guess, what's tethered to that Policy LU 6.1, kind of alluding to my earlier comments, say that in order to foster sort of the long-term fiscal health of the city, that we should have a mix of land uses and commercial types. So would at some point, the number of Measure Q sites approved at a certain intersection, or even throughout the city, begin to cause a problem in terms of the city's, in sort of a macro level, city as a whole, but micro level, in certain commercial sections of the city from becoming too reliant on one type of industry?
I think what you're referring to is Policy Land Use 6.1, which is encourage a mix of land uses that maintain and improve the city's long-term fiscal health.
Right.
And then there's Land Use Policy 6.2, which also says, "Continue to promote and support the vitality of commercial uses to meet the needs of local residents and that support regional-serving commercial centers."
Right.
So based on this proposal, we believe that those policies can be satisfied.
And so is that also then compatible with the zone, this is a zone for which is Local Business District? And I believe, reading on the staff report, the idea I get from that is that the businesses in those areas of the city are meant to foster a mix of business types for locals too frequent. But kind of based on a statistic we heard at several meetings ago, one of the industry professionals mentioned that only about 7% of their sales come from locals, but most of them come from people outside of the city. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out how that is compatible with a local, this zone, basically.
Yeah, well, I think this zone serves both regional serving and local residents, and that's illustrated in that Land Use 6.2, which basically says, "Meet the needs of local residents and support regional-serving commercial centers." So.
And so how do we strike that balance between regional serving centers and local serving?
Based on this ordinance from a free-market approach.
Okay. I guess those are all my questions. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Vavar. Anyone else? Commissioner Andrade?
Just peaking off of some of Commissioner Vavar's questions. So on the section where our goal and objective is to encourage, expand the city's revenue base, and then looking at our storefront map, I mean, how much revenue can we forecast or see that is going to impact or hit Costa Mesa books if four businesses are right across each other, just near walking distance? Is there sort of a, I don't know, some sort of metric to actually state that, that it? Is there sort of a, I don't know, some sort of metric to actually state that, that it is actually going to create revenue? Because it almost seems like they would cannibalize each other.
That's a very good possibility. And then the free market approach will probably more or less sift that down at some point. I think that's the expectations. So and according to some of the cannabis industry, that could occur.
So we're anticipating that they're going to eventually kind of cancel each other out or, right, the competition is going to be so great amongst, you know, just even looking at this little four corner example? So we're kind of hoping on it or project that they eventually will? I maybe you can help me clarify that?
Yeah, I don't know that the ordinance anticipated that as a as a future possibility of what might occur in the industry. What the ordinance clearly did do is allow for an approach to go in all the commercial zones without a limitation.
That's I appreciate that that feedback. And I guess the future will tell. I guess I've just, you know, as a just a general comment, I mean, we I mean, my limited time that I've been on the commission, this is the majority of the work, the great work that I've seen the the team do, lots of time, effort. And so if we're already anticipating that these businesses aren't going to be sustainable in the future because there's such a great competi, they're going to have such a great competition amongst each other, I'm wondering if that's like such a good spend of our taxpayer dollars and our planning staff, you know, we got big ticket items that our city really needs to focus on. So anticipating that eventually they're going to cancel each other out and we're spending on the front end so much time of your time and talent on on focusing on this. So just a general comment there. But and then on, I guess I in the response to Commissioner Vavar's, I also wanted to kind of highlight the point about the the new and growing business and industry and creating a diversity of new businesses. Can we still call it new when there's like four, again, so close to each other?
Well, I think that there this is a new industry. This is an industry that's not occurring in a lot of the cities around us. There there's different ways of looking at it. Like I said, we did do a report. We've got some Buxton Economic Information, which is a business type information source where you can kind of do a search on what types of businesses are open in the city, where it's a map oriented use in it. And the records that we were getting from it or the feedback was that generally for a retail good, thirty five is the number that saturates in Costa Mesa. So and that might it might be exceeded based on the applications that are currently in front of us. But like you said, there might also be a turnover at that point as well. We are it's it's an interesting scenario watching this new industry grow. Yeah, it's and and your questions and comments are 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 good from the perspective of there's a lot of unanswered ideas that we're not sure what's going to happen. But from the perspective of even some of the approved entitlements as we're going forward now, we're seeing kind of a slowdown of the some of the building permits being pulled and wondering what's going on with that. Might just be this particular applicant isn't prepared for it, or maybe they've changed their mind. I don't know. But there are different elements going on with regards to this entitlement process.
Just one other quick comment is, and I guess this is more for the maybe for the applicant regarding just their hiring staff. I mean, they they pitched that they're going to do a majority of hiring right in Costa Mesa, about eighty percent of their staff, which is great, more employment for our community. Is was there or was there any comment about the 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 union that would support these employees?
Yeah, that's the union is more of a civil matter. We don't the city doesn't get involved with unions, per se. When when the discussion of the union has come up in past applications, it's usually been based on a comment from the public, one of the union organizations. So just to be clear. But I do think actually there might be some requirement in the code, now that I think back about that, that does talk about encouraging that. Yeah, so maybe Michelle can kind of speak to that a little bit. But yeah, you know, and I stand corrected. I think there is something in the code that does require about that. I'm definitely wrong.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Commissioner Andrade, here in Costa Mesa, we require a labor peace agreement after two employees. The state of California requires it for, you know, different types of cannabis uses. Right now, it's around twenty employees, but moving forward, the state's going to be starting that LPA process around ten employees.
Awesome, awesome. I'll I can save those questions for the applicant when they come up, but it would be highly encouraged, just knowing the great potential these businesses can have. And one last question, promise, last one. This so right as local resident here, I've seen that this property has been vacant for some time. Has it been because it was specifically waiting for this business to this applicant to go through the process? Or has it just been vacant for so long? How did that? I don't know if you have a reference to that timeline.
I don't think we have a good reference, and it's probably a better applicant question. So I I look back in the Google Maps, Google Maps images, and it's been some years before since it's been open. So I don't know if it goes back since the adoption of the ordinance. The ordinance is about almost two years old now.
Okay.
So.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Preziosi, I saw you pull your mic down. I didn't know if you wanted to jump in on anything.
No, nothing.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Zick?
Thank you. Yeah, this question of a union has come up before. It's state requirement. It's also in our ordinance that there be a labor peace agreement. That doesn't mean union membership. It means the ability for there to be employees contacted in that sort of process. So they're not required to be part of a union. My question has to do with some questions that Commissioner Vavar raised. And I'll start, so I'm a little confused about something else. And so the context of my question is this. When we approved the retail cannabis down on Cabrillo, it was in a sealed zone. And my recollection is, and I think Ms. Halligan will have the photographic memory of this discussion, that the purpose of that zoning was to have businesses that served the general neighborhood. Now, on the zoning map that's included in this staff report, adjacent to this site where it shows C two zoning, that's labeled as general business, not regional business or something. It's called general business. The C one zone, which this site is on, is is labeled local business. And my question is, does that mean a locally owned business? Does it mean a business that serves the local community? How are we drawing a distinction between the purpose of C one and C two in terms of what they are? That's my question.
So the C one local business district, which is the the districts located just outside of this, actually C one S, which is a shopping center district, that's located outside of this corner property. And this one is C two. The C two.
I'm sorry, what?
I can go into both of them if there's a problem. Hold on a second, Michelle.
This site is in C one?
This is C two.
Maybe I'm looking at the map wrong.
C two. Oh, wait a second. I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm looking at it wrong. It is C one.
Okay.
So this district is intended to meet the local needs of the community by providing a wide range of goods and service in a variety of locations throughout the city. The permitted and conditional use, as well as development standards, are aimed toward reducing impacts on surrounding properties, especially those in areas where residential uses are in the vicinity.
Okay, and C two then is?
So C two is a and again, C two is located across the street where the Pokie, no, that's not Pokie Tiki. That would be C one.
But the purpose of C two.
Boston Market. The purpose of C two is which is located across the street is a general business district. The district is intended to provide for those uses which offer a wide range of goods and services, which are generally less compatible with more sensitive land uses of a residential or institutional nature. And then there is there's a C one S, which is a shopping center across the way.
No, so based that so based on what you said, what I'm what I'm hearing is that the differentiation is based on the impact to the surrounding area, not whether or not the goods and services offered in that zone are for local residents versus people driving from Huntington Beach to to go to OCC.
Yeah, it discusses the idea of providing a wide range of goods and services and to be considerate when the development is located near residential uses.
So it's more about impact to neighbors?
Right.
Thank you very much.
Correct.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick, Vice Chair.
Sure, I have one quick question about the rendering. It's page five of the plans we got. Can you just remind us of what the requirements are in terms of visibility and glazing and kids being able to look in and see what kind of activities going on? Because these look the rendering looks amazing, you know, with the light light inside. But I feel like I remember some something inconsistent with that.
I think it's fogged out.
Vice Chair Toler, the cannabis businesses are not allowed to have their products visible to the public. So the windows would have to be frosted or shaded in some manner. That way passersby can't see the products, they can't see symbols. And that's both desirable by the state's perspective for security as well.
And is that goal achievable in different ways? Or does it have to be frosted up to four feet? Or is it is it very specific?
We've seen a variety of tinting, but it is a physical barrier that's on the window.
Yeah. And maybe maybe this is for the applicant, the third bay on Adams, that looks like it's going to be back of the house. So I would imagine that that would be even even more darked out in a different way, maybe.
That third bay from from the corner is actually part of the application, like you said. So it is it is the back of house area.
Yeah, so that'll be that'll be even more blocked somehow. That'll be.
Correct.
Yeah.
Be a secure area.
Right. Okay, yeah, that's all that's all I wanted to clear up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Anyone else? All right, I think I'll hold off on any potential questions till later, but thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. All right, at this point, now open up the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward, or the applicant's representative. You can choose either podium, sir. If you would, please state your name for the record and let us know if you've read the staff report, the conditions of approval, and do you agree to them?
Good evening, Commission Member Staff. Thank you. My name is Dan Zerone, and CEO from the Earth. Yeah, I read the the proposal and the recommendations, and we're more than happy to comply with all of them. Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zerone. The floor is yours if you'd like to make a short presentation.
Yeah, I'll try to make it brief. I know it's been a long night already. So the next slide, please. So like I said, my name is Dan Zerone. From the Earth has been around since December of two thousand fifteen. We actually started one of the first cannabis dispensaries in Orange County in Santa Ana, a store that's continued to be running today and operating quite successfully. Our second store was in Port Rainimi, which opened in July two thousand eighteen. It was the first recreational dispensary opened in Ventura County. And we continued along through Long Beach, Moreno Valley. We've also opened up in Michigan and Missouri. Our ownership group is, like I said, I'm the CEO. I've been an attorney for thirty one years and a real estate developer for about that long as well. I handle most of the legal aspects, entitlement, development. And then my two partners, Jason Quinones and Kintu Patel, they handle all the day to day operations. So we we work very well together. We've gone through quite a few different states and a lot of different compliance checks and a lot of different statutes and ordinances, and we've learned quite a bit along the way. Next slide, please. So from the Earth, we've developed twelve properties, and we've done everything from simple tenant improvements to ground up development. In Long Beach, we demolished an existing, essentially a shack, one of those dilapidated houses that's fifty years old, and redeveloped a beautiful eighty five hundred square foot combination of distribution and retail store. Our current sales are in the twenty five million dollar range if you take across the portfolio. And we've done the entire chain of distribution, everything from cultivation and manufacturing, distribution, retail. We even dabbled in event management for a little while, but that kind of petered out. So we have quite a bit of experience in all the different aspects of the cannabis business. We're pretty proud of our record to date. Next slide, please. So what's most important for us is to be a good neighbor. When we go into any community, our intention has become build relationships with the local businesses, with the government, the staff, with our community. So we try and advertise locally. We try and do cross marketing with restaurants or other institutions that might benefit from our demographics. As as I believe as Commissioner Andrade mentioned about local hiring, we definitely take pains to hire almost entirely locally. Our Port Rainimi store has no employees from further than ten miles from the store. Santa Ana, we have a large contingent from Santa Ana as well, and also from the local Orange County area. We advertise in local publications, and we post in the in the local job boards and everything as well. We like to try and do strategic partnerships, again, cross marketing, trying to service the markets from other stores with our own. Next slide, please. Neighborhood integration is is critical, and you all have made some very interesting points, which I'd love to get to at the conclusions presentation regarding our proposed location. As you all know, we're at the intersection of two very highly trafficked thoroughfares, Harbor and Adams. It's a commercial heavy district. We're very intent on being a walkable and bikeable locations. We have bike racks that are going to be installed. We've even as a company done things in the past to promote biking and walking. We've offered discounts for people who come in on a bike and can show us a bike lock. We've offered discounts for people who show us that they've walked ten thousand steps that day. So we're aware of the need for that in cities, and it's something we promote as much as possible. Next slide, please. Just kind of quickly, I'm sure you've heard this kind of information before, our operations, we have generally an upscale demographic. I mean, we're a luxury store, and we generally tend to find more affluent members of society come into our stores, lawyers, educators, teachers. Although we also stock a wide range of pricing, so we're certainly open to people who don't have as much. Our our model is to have a one on one experience. Every customer who comes in is matched with a single sales representative who gives them quite a bit of information about the products and and everything they might need to know. We're all about training, and we're all about education, and that's something that we're big on. We have over a hundred pages of operational procedures, and we try and offer the customers as much education as we do to our employees. There's a very significant training program, approximately thirty days upon their hiring, when they're taught basically all aspects of the business, the products, and how they interact with our customers. Next slide. We've also managed in our time and our eight years of operation to build our own proprietary platforms. Our delivery platform is state of the art, something we developed ourselves. It allows us to very efficiently and effectively deliver to all the local areas. We have very sophisticated enterprise platforms for our software, allows complete traceability, storage, and we're among the leaders in our industry in making sure our technology is up to date. Next slide, please. One of the most important parts of what we do is making sure we have a safe environment for our staff, our customers, for the local areas. Very proud to say that in over seven years of operations in three different states, we've never had a single significant incident related to crime. We have twenty four seven monitoring. We have our our closed circuit TV cameras are monitored by people who can speak through the cameras. And they have on occasion, people have showed up at our locations late at night, and our security guards from New Mexico, wherever, have yelled at them through the cameras. So we've never experienced any significant loss or any type of crime. We do all the the standard protocols for our business, background checks. We're checking customers in. In California, in just our two dispensaries, we're handling over five hundred customers a day, and we're doing so with complete safety in mind. Next slide. Again, just a few other things. We have fifty plus cameras per location. A hundred percent of the area for our customers in our stores and in the pathways from the delivery vehicles are covered. Commissioner. Commissioner and Taylor, I think you were inquiring about the delivery. We've already made plans with the landlord to put cameras outside so that the entire path of travel, both from one side of the building and the other, is completely covered by cameras. So we're well aware of that issue and, and we're addressing it. Next slide, please. Obviously, safety is an important measure of what we do. We have substantial monitoring for fire, smoke, and carbon monoxide. We have regular training with our staff regarding safety disaster and emergency. We have an emergency coordinator. We've tended to post their telephone number. It's a 24/7 number that they can reach anytime, dare night, if anything happens. We're fortunate to say that we haven't had too many incidents, if any at all, in certain locations, but we're aware of it and we address it as much as we can. Next slide, please. Waste control, again, being a good neighbor, ensure, we want to make sure there's no odor, there's no problem with the, the very slim amount of products that, that get out of our chain of possession. We work with Gaika, it's California's leading cannabis waste company. There's very minimal waste that come out of our storefronts. And what little we have, we're meticulously recording and making sure that we're dealing with it in a, in a compliant way. Next slide. So again, Commissioner Andrade, you were mentioning the union. We, we are a union shop in Santa Ana. We also had a labor peace agreement in Port Winemee, and the la, union was voted down by our employees. So we entertained it, and our employees decided they didn't want it. In Long Beach, which is a store we no longer have, we sold it to somebody. We were a union shop there as well. So two of the three stores in California were union-ready. And this one, obviously, will have the labor peace agreement. We're happy to entertain the union in any vote. We have an incredibly diverse workforce. In fact, you know, minorities are the majority of our workforce. So we, we definitely look at underrepresented sectors of our, of our community, and we try and give them a place that they can feel welcomed and safe. And again, like I said earlier, you know, we definitely prefer local residents. You know, we want to be a good, a part of the community. We want to create jobs and do all the things that will make our community a stronger place. Next slide. Vehicle traffic, Commissioner Vivar, you mentioned an event that happened at Stizzy. It's not really surprising. I mean, in our industry, certain events draw tremendous crowds. Grand openings, the, the annual Cannabis New Year's on 4/20, you know, huge discounts are given, giveaways, and our market very much shows up for those events. It could be three, or four, or five times the amount of business you'd see on a normal day. I can tell you at our store in Port Winemee, on a typical 4/20, we have lines literally around the block waiting for the discounts and giveaways, whereas on a typical day, there's two, or three, or four people in the shop at a time. So a, a grand opening is a, is an unusual event. I don't think that a, a location that has nearly 250 parking spaces is going to be enveloped by cars too often. Talked earlier, we have commercial-grade HVAC systems, the same ones that are used in hospital operating rooms that literally scrub the air before it gets outside. So we have no odor problems. The, as you've seen, the building is not going to be changed on the outside at all. We'd like to mention, Commissioner Toler, regarding the windows. We have had this issue before, and what we do with windows is they're reinforced from behind. So although they'll appear to be windows on the front, it's going to be drywall and rebar behind. So there's no opportunity for anybody to break the windows. So from the front, you'll see it as a window. From behind, it'll be a wall, and that'll be for the entire street-facing side of the building. So we're, we, we account for that. Next slide, please. You know, our, our, our company was born on philanthropy. You know, we were sponsoring a group called the Harold Robinson Foundation for years, which sends underprivileged kids to camp. Sent over 10,000 kids to camp over a 20-year period, and it's kind of what we started with. We then created our own nonprofit, 501(c)(3) Corporation, organization called the From the Earth Foundation, prior to the pandemic, to raise funds for a variety of different services and causes in our local area. We always donate 1% at least of gross revenues to charities. And in 2022, last year, just in Santa Ana, Port Winemee, we donated more than $200,000 to local charitable organizations. Next slide. So this particular location, we're projecting revenues of, of $7 million. We hope to, that would result in $70,000 donations, and that goes to medical facilities and schools. I mean, during the pandemic, we took one of our manufacturing facilities. We shut it down, and we just created hand sanitizer for schools and police departments. We gave it out for free. We gave out, I, I can't remember how much, but it was somewhere around 50,000 liters of hand sanitizer for free. It's something that we know about, it's something that we focus on. And we don't just do, it's not just about money, it's also about time. So we have all of our employees donate their time and efforts to local services. In Port Winemee, there's beach cleanups every week that we participate in, a variety of other activities that we're always sure that we participate. Next slide. You know, the best measure of what your future is going to be is what your past. And I'm, I'm very proud and honored to say that every city we're in, we have always established amazing relationships with the city, staff, electeds, and government. I'm also very proud to say that they've, they're willing to put their, their relations with us in paper, and we've gotten quite a few commendations from different electeds and, and cities that we've been in. And I can assure you, if we're given this opportunity to set up a location in Costa Mesa, we'll be doing the same with the Costa Mesa government and community. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zerone. I'll go ahead and lead us off on this. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
To start, what can you tell us about the, the third unit that you're planning on acquiring for this site?
So the landlord has always had the intention of relocating that particular business to another vacant suite, which is actually on Harbor, which is actually a more heavily trafficked side. She's currently on Adams, and they're going to move her over, or give her the opportunity to move to Harbor.
Within the same building?
The same building, yeah, exactly. So he'd always told us about that, but until we actually got to the point where we were going to get the CUP, he didn't want to take any efforts to do that. But if, if we are, you know, lucky to be granted approvals tonight, that's what he'll be doing tomorrow morning. And in fact, he also called her this week. I believe the woman who owns the, the business is on vacation, so he couldn't get ahold of her, but that's something that he's very intent on doing. She's a good tenant, long-lasting tenant. She is on a month-to-month leases, lease, so he's within his rights to do that. But she's going to be relocated in, to a site that also has, from what he told me, existing water and gas hookups. It'll be a relatively easy TI to get her to move.
Okay. Do you have anything else in writing as far as that's concerned? I know it doesn't directly involve you, but is there, is there anything that the property owner has put down as far as your lease agreement that would insinuate?
I don't, and he was going to come here tonight. I'm a little surprised he's not here, but he was going to be here to answer that exact question, and fortunately, he didn't make it tonight.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Zerone. While you were doing your public outreach, did you talk to any of the adjacent businesses and get feedback from not just those within your immediate building, but also within all the businesses with the shared parking as well?
Yeah, so we did go out, and we got four support letters, which we had submitted as part of our record. We also had spoken to a bunch of local businesses. I think Stizzy got around 70 support letters, and a lot of the people who we talked to had already given them a support letter. They figured, hey, we're already on the record as wanting this type of business. So, yeah, but we didn't find, I mean, look, certainly there's, there's some objection to our industry. We're, we're used to it, but the general consensus that we got was pretty positive, and, and some people were willing to put writing to that.
Okay, yeah, I think the, the, my question stems from this idea that if you're potentially going to be a new business in a surrounding business district, what do the existing tenants kind of feel in terms of welcoming you or giving you feedback in terms of incorporating into that area? So I don't know if you had any good feedback from them?
No, well, most, most of the businesses we talked to, and this is, you know, universal, is that they know it's going to bring a lot of foot traffic. I mean, dispensaries bring foot traffic, and if there's foot traffic in the area, we're in, you know, the, the mall that has a lot of other businesses right there. If people are going to be going to From the Earth, there's a good chance they're going to Pizza Hut, or there's a good chance they're going to some of the other businesses right there. And within that signalized intersection, as Commissioner Andrade pointed out, there's a lot of retail, a lot of consumers going on there, and so that's almost always what we hear. Now, occasionally, obviously, we have some objections to cannabis. I mean, it's something, like I said, we've gotten used to. And usually, that's from people who haven't experienced what cannabis now is, the level of customer service, the level of the environment, the level of the customers that we get. I mean, you know, it's, and also, you know, in a lot of places, you know, we also always hear about crime. Crime is something that people are concerned about. And what we've found, honestly, anecdotally, is that crime tends to go down in the areas we show up in, because we have 24/7 armed guards, you know? And I mean, the criminals don't want to come into those areas. So we've found, generally speaking, a pretty positive attitude.
And, and I think you may have just answered another one of my questions. Your security is going to be armed?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. And stemming from the previous question about feedback from the local businesses, I don't know if I missed it, but did you do an open house or any kind of event to bring the neighbors within the vicinity in?
So I, I'm sorry, we did not, and I'll tell you why. As, you know, this application's been pending for about two years. It's been a long time. And actually, to mention, to, one of the other questions was, has it been vacant for two years? No, we've been paying rent for two years. And at the time that we took the space, it was vacant. So the suit store that was there was gone by the time we showed up. And, you know, we weren't anticipating a two-year response. But anyway, we got on this planning schedule with very, just around three weeks ago. We didn't really have the time, and I apologize. We, we should have done that open house, but we didn't have the time to put it together.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zerone. You mentioned university training for staff. What university is that, and what's the nature of the training?
Well, it, we, we kind of call it cannabis university. No, it's not a university like an accredited school. We have 30 days of training, and we have, we've created essentially a, a mock training space in one of our stores. And then we also have a five-day rigorous, it's a curricular-based study session, which all of our new employees go through. So they learn all the aspects of not only the, the plant and the products, but the physiology, how it affects different physical conditions. It's a very involved training program.
Okay, so by extension, this is not something that's being marketed as a university, per se?
If I said that, I, I misspoke. No, absolutely not, absolutely not.
Okay, all right. I just saw it in the, in the report as being a university.
No, I think, no.
Okay, thank you. I see that you give away quite a bit of money through the, From the Earth Foundation. I didn't see anything about volunteer opportunities for your staff. Is that also a part of outreach and engagement in the community as well?
All the time. I mean, Port Winemee, we do quite a bit. They have a weekly, every Saturday, they have a beach cleanup, which our employees are always encouraged to go to. They have, we actually were the sponsor of Port Winemee Beach Week. I forgot what it's called, but they hadn't had this beach festival for four or five years. We were the main sponsor of that festival when we brought it back to Port Winemee. And all of our employees are, are volunteering at that particular event. Santa Ana, they're volunteering around Orange County. Again, it's not just about money for us, it is about time. And we try and spread it out as much as we can.
Sure, and I, it's just, I only ask because I, I see that you made a point of talking about the foundation, but no, nothing that I saw about volun, actual volunteering. I didn't know if it was just money-based.
I did mention it, maybe I didn't focus on it as much as I should have.
Maybe I just wasn't listening, that could be entirely me, so thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
By extension, you, you mentioned in your presentation that you also engage with schools. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so again, that's, that's more along the Harold Robinson Foundation. So the Harold Robinson Foundation was an organization developed by David Moss, here he is, about 15 years ago. They run a very successful camp up in the Angeles National Forest, and they set up a program with a variety of elementary schools in Watts, just in Watts. And so over the 15 years or 20 years that they were around, they brought over 10,000 children up to camp with, I'm going to cry, I'm sorry. I talk about this thing always, but they, they bring up to the camp with like parents and teachers and police, and they spend three days teaching the kids about self-empowerment and self-esteem in their community and giving, creating relationships between the parents and the teachers and the police and the kids. It's a remarkable situation, and it's something that we sponsored and did quite a bit of volunteering for throughout pre-pandemic times.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to get a visual of, of what the, the foundation might do in terms of the visual or the, the depth or breadth of, you know, if you're working in the K through 12 system in the local areas in which you have a dispensary, are you actively engaging with the local elementary schools with, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, we do, but we obviously are appropriate. I mean, there's no mention of cannabis. I mean, obviously, you know, we try and keep the, the substance of our business separated from the purpose of the volunteering, right? So when we do it, we do it in a way where we're offering time, we're offering money, we're offering the ability for the schools to come to us and maybe get some things that they couldn't get from other places. But at the same time, we understand the business we're in, and we, we do want to shield children, obviously, from, from what we're doing at this point, so.
I, I appreciate your, your feedback, sir, because we've, we've actually had to ask this line of questioning before when there's any discussion of schools and foundations and so forth. So I appreciate the response.
We understand, thank you.
Thank you. It is also a common question, and I believe originally stemmed from Commissioner Zick. I don't want to take his thunder, but I think it's such a good question. What's your competitive edge being on a corner with all these other businesses?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question, it's kind of a hard one to answer. I can tell you that anecdotally, we're the perfect company to ask about too much competition. So when we started in, in Port Winemee in July 2018, we had bought the building, and through a long story that nobody wants to hear about, we had another dispensary in that building. So you would park, you'd turn left to our building, you'd turn right to theirs. And we were terrified. We thought it was going to be a really bad thing, and we were going to cannibalize our business and everything else. It was fantastic. It was like a food court, where you have McDonald's and Carl's Jr. and Jack in the Box. People would come to buy a certain product at our competitor. If they couldn't find it, they'd come to us. Although dispensaries may seem like a one-size-fits-all, they're really not. I mean, they really cater to different types of customers. They have different types of products. Some are more, we're a more luxury store. Our, our products are generally not that cheap, although we obviously have some, they're generally not. And so that's the type of customer we generally get. The store that was next door to us in Port Winemee kind of went for a lower-end product. They went for more the, the, the cheaper sale. And so it was great, because, you know, we kind of balanced each other out. And I've, we've found that in a, and again, this is anecdotal evidence. I'm not talking from any, you know, double-blind test or anything. But what happens with cannabis is when it comes into a town, people think that the market is this big, and they're all going to take each other's business. But what happens is when people my own age, and older, younger, find out that cannabis is not what they remember being in the 70s and 80s. I mean, it's a really amazing customer service experience. And so what happens to the market is as people get comfortable with the stores and see what goes on when they're in, the market actually grows and expands. So in Port Winemee, where we were the second store, next, the one that was next door to us, we did a certain amount of sales. Now, Port Winemee is 1.1 square miles, right? There's 11 stores in 1.1 square miles. Our sales have stayed exactly the same for almost five years now. Like even with that level of competition in that tiny space, we were able to maintain, and we do it from customer service, and we do it from, I mean, look at our reviews on some of the reviewing sites. I mean, our reviews are spectacular in terms of the time we spend with the customer, the education we give to the customer, like what we offer. We offer an experience. We don't have them come in and take a product. We want to talk to you, we want to know why you're buying, what are you buying for? And what we find with them is we have tremendous customer retention when they realize, we're not just trying to shove them full of product, we're trying to give them the thing that they want.
I see. All right, thank you, Mr. Zerone, I appreciate the response. I think those are all of my questions for now, so let me go ahead and open it up to the rest of the commission, starting with Commissioner Zick.
Thank you, a lot of good questions there. I applaud your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
Particularly after paying rent on an empty space for two years.
It's been, it's been rough, it's been rough.
On slide, page 14 of your presentation, you had a couple of logos from organizations that I think you were, yeah, you were speaking about the public benefit. I think I've answered my question, but when I see the Costa Mesa United logo, it appears to me, when I see it in this form, that somehow they're a backer or sponsor partner.
Absolutely not. And when I see. If that was, if that was the intention, I want to say absolutely not. These are, these are organizations we intend to promote.
And I accept that, because I saw in your present, your handwritten materials that you simply indicate that you seek to enter into partnerships.
Correct.
And you list them as an organization.
Yeah, so I want to be real clear. So if that was, I was, I apologize.
No, that's fine, but here's my question. There are a lot of groups and organizations in the city of Costa Mesa and other cities that, that need help and could use help. Many of these organizations are geared towards helping adults with different issues, different challenges. And I can't help but wonder whether you see an inherent conflict between your organization getting involved with groups that are child-centric, Costa Mesa United. getting involved with groups that are child-centric, Costa Mesa United, schools, there's a lot of people to help, and these people may eventually become customers of your product and your business, but they're not when they're children. I just can't help but wonder whether you see, because I do, whether you see an inherent conflict with getting involved with those kinds of organizations.
Well, I guess if we were promoting our products, of course I would see the conflict, but we don't. And I, again, I would, I would suggest, I would encourage you to go to the haroldrobinsonfoundation.org and see the types of things they're doing with children.
Let me ask you this, then, not to cut you off.
Sure.
We have a tremendous homeless problem in this city, many cities do. Why would you not think that that was more important than getting involved with Costa Mesa United, which is a youth-sport-centric organization, not for needy children?
Well, this certainly wasn't meant to be an exhaustive list of philanthropic organizations we would intend to engage with.
Okay. It doesn't affect whether your application gets approved or not, but I guess I just, I just wonder what the thought process is, what the business plan is. You know, I can't help but think of Marlboro in the old days, and their overt marketing plan, and whether your marketing plan, I recognize donation, public benefit, I get that, but you do it for a reason, because jewelry stores, camera stores, they're, they're not doing that same kind of thing that you're proposing here. You're doing it for a reason.
So Commissioners, can I speak really from the heart? When I saw what the Harold Robinson Foundation was doing, I, I mean, I might cry here at the stand, I, I cried at how beautiful it was. We don't necessarily do everything because of money. Sometimes we think because of what's in our heart, and that honestly, it touched our heart, and that's why we do it.
Okay, I get that. Okay, the other thing you mentioned, and I was a little surprised by it, actually, maybe pleasantly, when you indicated on, I think, a title slide, or one of the early slides, that across your 12 stores, your revenue's 25 million a year, and, simple math, 2.1 million per store per year on average. You indicated that you're projecting 7 million out of this store.
Yeah.
Why is that? Why isn't so much higher than your average?
We don't have 12 stores, because we develop 12 properties. We've sold nine of them. So we've sold off the Missouri stores, and we've sold off the Michigan store. So this was how many properties we, I just wanted to show you the experience we've had in building stores.
I get that.
But currently, currently, we have four, three locations, and we're doing around $25 million.
Got it. So that 7 million really is in line with what your average is?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And of course, on that, you'll be paying to the city the 7% gross.
Yes.
Revenue. And in addition to that, another 1%, you're intending to donate to various charities in the community.
That's what we do, yeah.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Vivar.
All right, so thank you for your presentation, Mr. Zeroni, is that?
Yeah, Zeroni, thank you.
So, Mr. Zeroni, did you write the applicant letter that was attachment to, to our report?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
So, in that letter, there's a sentence that reads, and I'm, you know, not quoting verbatim here, but it reads, "The vacant 2,370-square-foot space will be turned into a luxury cannabis store." So what do you mean by vacant?
No, I, I mean, clearly I made a mistake there, that the, the beauty salon is, the landlord has told us that the beauty salon will be relocated to a different suite in the building. So yeah, that was a mistake.
So, does the hair salon know this?
I, I can't speak for the hair salon, I speak to the landlord. And when I spoke to the landlord about that issue, he said it has been his intent to allow them to relocate to that harbor-side suite, and he tried to contact them, I believe, again, the business owner was on vacation, but that is his intent, and he expressed it to me. I, I obviously can't speak for what communications actually happened.
So if the intent, you, I think you've mentioned earlier, was quote, "for a while" to, to do that relocation, I guess what strikes me is why would this communication be happening now, rather than, I don't know, 30 days ago when you said you found out about this hearing tonight?
Because the landlord didn't want to do anything until he felt more comfortable that we were gonna be at the hearing. So it's, it's really not my, I, I don't have the ability to speak that tenant, because I can't negotiate a deal. I have to go with the landlord. And so when the landlord was apprised of the situation, he said, "Yeah, we always wanted to talk to her, but we wanted to see when you were needed through the process." I mean, again, it's been a two-year process, so the timing is, is certainly an issue, yeah.
Right, because the reason I ask is I, I know this tenant very well, actually, and she was completely surprised when I told her over the weekend that her suite was kind of slated for, I guess you could say, removal, her business, and so, you know what kind of strikes me as interesting? So you, you mentioned that you also care very much about equity, right? Minorities?
Of course, yeah. I think we do, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And then so I'm guessing, what I'm wondering about is how you square that with you displacing minority-owned, women-owned business, and obviously, I mean, if it is true that they will be simply relocated to another unit in the building, I mean, you and I know that relocating a business is, is not pennies and dimes, and while you're doing that, you're also losing revenue in that move, so I'm just wondering how you square your equity goals with that?
I, I mean, look, I, I speak to the landlord. I, I can't tell you specifically what he's planning on. From, from our discussions, he said, "I've got a space on the harbor side, which is a more heavily-traffic side than the atom side." And so it was his intention to give her the opportunity to relocate. So when you use the word displaced, I don't know if that's the right word, I think relocate is a better word, still on the first floor, still on a street-facing suite, and on the more heavily-traffic side, so it's not as if we're throwing her out in the street.
Right.
We're putting her on a better side.
Do you not think it would be, it's, it's a pretty big kind of ask of a small locally-owned business to just move all their stuff, even if it is around the corner?
Well, I guess, no, certainly it's an ask, but I guess.
If I, if I may, let me just jump in real quick, Commissioner Vivar.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Chairman, sure.
I think we're missing some information here, and it's getting into some conjecture.
Sure.
So maybe we could, we could focus it a little bit more, sir.
Right, right, right. Okay. You mentioned you were the first store to open in Ventura County?
We were the first recreational dispensary in Ventura County.
And Port Weneme is in Ventura County, right?
Port Weneme, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
So what kind of dispensary was the one that you said you moved next to if?
It was medical.
Oh, okay.
We were the first one to be approved as a recreational dispensary.
Oh, okay, so, but they were a legal medical dispensary, then?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
But they were not recreational.
Okay. So regarding the, kind of the traffic generation that you alluded to, and sort of cannabis holidays and grand openings and such.
Sure.
What's your plan to manage your traffic flow, say, you know, during 420 of 2024, considering that you're next to a, something like a 26,000-square-foot dispensary?
Yeah, I mean, well, hopefully we'll work in collaboration with Stizzy. I mean, what we did in our previous experience being next doors, we knew them well, and we worked with them to make sure that we could work together. I mean, what we do in Port Weneme is, we'll park people off-site, we have valet systems in place. In one, one time, we were doing a particular event, we rented off-site parking. I mean, it, my, my guess is that Stizzy is going to generate a much greater amount of the par, of the traffic in that mall than we will, but our intention is use all available resources to ameliorate the inconvenience that happens. I mean, I can't tell you, like, look, you heard, two weeks ago, there was a problem with parking. I can't tell you that's never going to happen, but if you take 365 days out of the year, and if there's two or three days where there's an inconvenience, where we're doing our best to help out, I mean, that's, I think that's the best we can do.
Right, because I mean, you kind of mentioned, and I'm, I mean, I'm a transportation engineer, so this interesting statistic of our traffic during cannabis holidays is three to five times as much as it normally is, so I kind of think of that, and I do the math, do the other store next to you, plus yourself, plus the other one across the corner.
No, and that's what I said earlier, we, we find at our stores, three, four, and five times the amount of traffic on that one day, but to use that day as a barometer of what happens throughout the year, like, for instance, I'll give you an example, in Port Weneme, we were finding that we, we have 34 spaces in that building, we own the building there. We were having trouble with traffic between 5:00 and 6:00, because people would get off work and come in. So we created a happy hour between 11:00 a.m. and 12:00 noon, when we had very little business. And so a lot more cars started coming between 11:00 and 12:00. So there's ways that you can work with your discounting, we have direct communication with our customers through Twitter, through text, that we'll, we'll advertise a sale at 2:00 p.m. to get them out before the after-hour crush. So we can work with it to, and we, again, except for 420 and the grand opening, which you commented on, those are the two times when we generally have issues with, with dealing with all the cars.
Okay, so you said you do, you see yourself using something like a valet system or some other way to manage traffic?
I mean, that's, on a, on a typical heavy parking day, that's what you do. I mean, you get valets involved, yes. And possibly off-site parking with shuttles, if that's at all feasible, and working with the local, you know, other retailers to try and work something out together.
All right. So my last question, I'm going to close off now, but have you identified that possible off-site parking?
I have not.
Okay, that's it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. And just a quick question to staff in terms of event days, those are formal applications from the applicant to hold events, and then it's a zoning administrator approval with a set of conditions which the applicant has to abide, correct?
It might not be a zoning administrator approval unless it sort of moved to that level. Normally, it's a staff-level review and a, a permit.
Okay, is parking mitigation a part of that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Director Dropkin. Other commissioners, do you wish to speak? Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for answering all these questions. It seems like you have enough energy for more.
Please.
I want to go back to the windows, and I just want to understand. So we have this local, the local regulation is, it's gotta be, you can't be able to see activity inside, and that would be frosted or some black film or something like that. But you were saying drywall?
No, from the outside, they'll be frosted. They'll be dark, but on the inside, there's drywall and rebar that we put, so we reinforce the windows, so nobody can break those windows. We did the same thing in Port Weneme.
So the windows are going to be closed, so from the inside, you can't even tell there's a window?
Correct.
And natural light comes through the transom still?
I mean, we usually, like, at the very top, we'll leave some natural light if we can, but our stores are really well-lit. Like, so our stores from the Earth, we have a lot of Earth imagery.
Yeah.
So we have, like, stamped green concrete floors, like grass, we have, like, clouds, you know? So it's like, it feels like you're kind of like, oh, you go to Vegas and you have that whole, right? It's kind of a similar thing, so we're very well-lit inside, and natural light is, like in Port Weneme, with none, we have zero.
Right.
But in other stores, we do have.
So from the outside, it's, it's?
No change, no change.
Three bays and two bays? And they're all just going to be black, though, right? They're not going to look like this rendering?
Well, they'll look, they'll be reflective.
Okay.
They'll be reflective, so you're not going to be able to, it's not going to look black.
Mirrored.
Yeah, it's going to be mirrored, yeah, exactly.
Okay, all the way to the top, probably, the transom.
You know, I don't know exactly how high those windows are. If they're, if they're eight feet, maybe we'll go up six feet, so we can get a little natural light, but.
Yeah. And there's no conflict, Steph, with our, any transparency requirements or anything for storefront retail? We don't have anything like that, I don't think.
So the, and it was interesting, I was more, I was more educated on this when I did a site visit for the, for the site, catty-corner to this. And one of the requirements is, is light and energy. So basically, when you do close off, when you open up a light source, like when it with frosting versus opaque completely, you, they want you to take advantage of the light sources that are coming in with less energy. The state has requirements that you cannot see products, we obviously follow that as well. But beyond that, that's, that's what we're limited to.
Okay, that's the only question I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, anyone else? All right, Commissioner Tabor.
A few things. In this process, does the city tell you that having a philanthropic angle is a good thing?
Some cities do. I'm not sure that Costa Mesa did, but, you know, again, that's part of who we are as a company.
It just seems pretty common for a lot of the applicants.
We're used to it. I mean, most cities do have a phil, you know, a donation level that you have to be, so it's something we kind of have become used to, and it's also, it's something that kind of makes you feel good, so why not do it again?
And then, have you talked to anybody at Costa Mesa United?
No.
It seems odd to me as a business owner that you would use their logo in a presentation without consulting them.
Point taken. I probably, I, I understand that.
I'm not familiar with the law in that issue, but it seems like it's not cool.
Okay.
Minimally. Advertising. Mr. Dropkin, does the advertising in Costa Mesa follow the same restrictions as far as cannabis-related verbiage or visual graphics? So if someone had a billboard for a shop, is it also prone to the requirements that it not really state that it's cannabis?
So the requirements for the site have limitations.
I'm saying around the city.
But around the, and throughout the city, we have those for the site. But from a billboard perspective, we don't control content. So some of the advertisements throughout the city that have billboards, obviously, we prefer not to have billboards for the most part.
I just saw in some of his, your images, as potential marketing or something, you know, had pot leaves or whatever.
Yeah, so we follow the local ordinances. And that particular billboard you're looking at, the ordinance allowed that, and that was approved by, I forgot which department, but, you know, it's, we just follow what we're allowed to do.
In regards to some of the promotions you said with the events, you spoke to giveaways.
Yeah.
I'm not totally familiar with the law, but it seems like in the alcohol business, if you own a bar, you're not allowed to give away a drink.
We don't give away product. We give away merchandise, t-shirts. Yeah, merch.
Cool. I guess the final comment is, for someone that's such a veteran with 12 stores, opening in a variety of states and doing $25 million, it seems a little sloppy in this presentation that you brought an image into your presentation that said dispensary on it, when it's clearly a violation. It seems sloppy that you did a mock-up of a storefront that you could clearly see into and see the product, so as someone with your experience, that seems a little bit sloppy.
Again, you're right, it is. That's a, that's a logo that we had from years ago, and the architect who put it together put it in, and I didn't catch it, it was a mistake.
Cool, that's all for me.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Tabor, and thank you, Mr. Zeroni, for a hard line of questions.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other questions, now open the floor for public comments, starting here in chambers, so if you wish to speak, come to one of the two podiums. Give you three minutes apiece.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Omar, I'm a resident about 40 years in Costa Mesa. I'm here to express my frustration and my concern with so many cannabis being opened in such a small community. We're a square foot about 15,000 or so, and it appears that we are going to be compressed with a lot of stores in such a small community, and my, my fear is that it'll bring back our transit problem and possibly outside vandalism along with crime. As, as we saw the, the parking lot where the store is going to be placed, the parking[1729.36] the parking lot does get full. And since we're talking about walking or driving, my fear is that the buyer, throughout the process, might get stopped since it is cash-intensive business. So I urge you that. Maybe we can reconsider the proximity of the businesses to expand different areas rather than such a close services being generated for sale of illegal, I say legal drugs. So I please, I urge you to reconsider possibly expanding the opening of these products to expand. Definitely, we have more stores here than McDonald's right now or even Canes. So we're having all these people or companies coming in and taking over small companies. I don't believe that's right. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Dr. Mary Pham. I'm a longtime resident of Costa Mesa, 12 years. And five years ago, I started Lollipop Dental. So I'm right two doors down from Stizzy's, and I'll be using that parking lot. So far, no one has come to my small business and asked me how I felt. But I've come to the city council during Zoom when all of the regulations were being put together. You know, our practice provides specialty dental care for infants and children and families in our community. And so we firsthand seen so far how Stizzy's has affected our business. And so, Commissioner Tabor, you had mentioned earlier, if the local businesses will leave, if we keep opening dispensaries nearby and create this cannabis district. And right now, I'm in the middle of my lease negotiation, and I probably will leave. And I planned to stay here in Costa Mesa for many, many years. My kids go to RSI. RSI is opening down the street from this cannabis district. And all of the families that come to RSI talk about the dispensaries opening right down the street from where our kids are going to go to school. And so, you know, our families walk from Lollipop Dental down to the Boba Tea Shop, and the parents are walking around Stizzy's because they don't want to walk by the odor. Right where our door opens, our doctors and our staff and our families walk out, and we smell it everywhere. When I was here at the commissioner meeting for some of the other ones, you know, there was all this emphasis on odor control, like, we're going to make sure it's safe. They're leaving the Stizzy's property and standing in front of our door where we don't have security. You know, so I just want to say that, you know, the smoke goes everywhere. There's no regulation for outside the doors, it's just within that property. But we're two doors down. So those people are loitering in front of us. And, you know, our families are saying they're not coming back because of what's happening in this area. So I just wanted to let you know my thoughts and feelings. I live right on the corner of Mesa Verde and Adams. This is our community. We've been here, we work here, we live here. And these are the families we serve, and this is what they're telling us. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Doctor. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Jason Piazza. I'm a longtime resident of Costa Mesa. I grew up here, went to Estancia in Tiwinkle in California. I've got three kids here, ages 10, 8, and 5, that go to Waldorf. And I just wanted to give my support to From the Earth. I am a cannabis smoker, and I only shop at From the Earth. I used to shop at other places, but when I found From the Earth in Santa Ana, I was really greeted by some fantastic, educated staff, their bud tenders. And it was from them that I really learned about, you know, the different strains, and I really had a great experience. So as a Mesa Verde resident, I'm really pumped up to have From the Earth there. And I just wanted to say thank you for considering the replication.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Michael Siegel. I'm representing the owners of the neighboring property, my father Gil Siegel. He bought the property in 1967. I was nine years old, I'm sorry. And he saw it as his retirement, and he's 91 now. It seems to have worked. And let me just say that no one has contacted us. This is, can I ask where the 277 number came about? Is that everything on the center? I'm not sure. But nobody has dealt, we've sent a letter through our attorney today. And it's a shared parking agreement. So when we've got the former Pier 1 spot on that side, and we've got this over here, we're in the middle. And if they take up all the parking, we have all sorts of local businesses, which we've had for many, for decades. We've had a property manager, I'm here because we had a property manager who is six months older than my father, and he passed during COVID. But he knew, he's been dealing with the city all these years. And in any case, there is a legal agreement with the owners of the building, right? Not with the tenants. We have to speak to the owners. We've not been contacted. And historically, we have not had a lot of good experiences. So we look forward to being able to work with them and trying to find a way to make this work. We are, I am not opposing, in principle, the spot. However, the parking and signage and security are major concerns of ours. And on behalf of our beloved tenants, one of whom did pass during COVID, the owner of Crown, the Dry Cleaners. In any case, that's about all I have. I wasn't expecting to speak. I look, we look forward to discussing with the owners of the building, who are the only ones who can negotiate the parking agreement and come to a discussion. We've had potential tenants in the past and not been able to have them because we couldn't assign enough, assigned parking for a pharmacy, a small pharmacy, or a medical business. Lollipop is a wonderful tenant. We would be horribly bereft if we lost them. And we're trying, you know, we have a lot of work to do. We have had a lot of crystal meth addicts falling asleep in between our buildings. And it's a continual issue and a very sympathetic point.
Mr. Siegel, that's three minutes. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Commissioner and City Council and staff. Just want to just point out that, just listening to all the comments and the presentation that gentleman did, there's really no benefit in granting this proposal. There is no benefit at all for the community or the city at all. Again, there is a small business there that's been there for more than 10 years, you know, connecting with the community and offering a business that they need, you know? And the message here that we're sending, you know, the city having, by having this many dispensaries in tight, you know, little corners, you know, what are we sending, what message are we sending to the community and to everybody? And again, the short notice that was given to the tenant, five days, I think that's, you know, unacceptable and sketchy. And, you know, just even the presentation shows information that's deceiving now what holds in the future, you know, for that company if they're like that right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Christina. I also work for Lollipop Dental. As a person that works there pretty much every day, I do see a lot of parents walk in, expressing us their concerns, how when they come to the office, all they see is a bunch of people just smoking on the sides or they're right in the front. We do see a lot of kids passing by here, a lot of youngsters walking around. So I feel as well, someone that's always there and sees those children, it wouldn't be good for our community, especially since we are a pediatric dentist, and we do deal with children every day. So having this dispensary, I feel like it would affect our children as well. Me, as a mother, I do have a child. My child does come as well at times with my job to pick me up with my mother. So at times, my son tells me, "Mom, what is that smell? I don't like that smell." So I just tell my son, "Stay in the car." So I feel like that wouldn't be, you know, something that would be good for our children and, you know, every other young child around here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, thank you. I want to thank Mr. Commissioner Rojas for bringing up the attention to the hair salon. Just to make it clear, the hair salon is not only a hair salon, it's also a barber shop. And it's been a local barber shop for 18 years. And so, going back to the point of Commissioner Vivar, the fact that we're not considering the diversity of businesses for the, as you went back, Commissioner Zick mentioned that the definition is for local residential community, as he clarified that term, for C1 district or zoning. So I, again, a few other folks mentioned, it's actually against that, the orders and the policy, and this is a policy reasoning for the community. And as someone who has also a child who's going to be in high school soon, this is a block from her Costa Mesa High School. I just do not see any advantage of having additional, yet another dispensary added to the community. But most importantly, and I'm not here to accuse anyone, but I'm glad that I get to put the face, the face and the name of Mr., let me say your last name right, Zaharoni. I'm not sure if any of the members are aware of the investigation that was done in Long Beach, council member. And one of the council members was actually, on several occasions, was, I wouldn't even use the term because I'm not here to accuse anybody, but was given funds from Mr. Zaharoni for his advancement of his businesses. And I do not think Costa Mesa wants to even have that, what is it called? Even the impurity that not even suggesting that we're also following what Long Beach did and the investigation was done. You can look it up on Google yourself, it's open-source information. So I hate to say that, we'll be next, we'll be out there on Google as the next city to accept that kind of, you know, bullying in our community and accepting, allowing, kicking, literally, that's what it is. It's kicking a local, diverse, female, as a woman of minority myself. It just really upsets me. And as an example, we're setting for the next generation to allow that, to take that away from them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Gerardo Camacho. Firstly, let's focus on the issue at hand, which is the future of Angel's Beauty Salon. As a representative of our business and our customers, I'm here to voice our concerns regarding Dan Zironi's decision to convert our location into a dispensary for his company from the CEO. He's the CEO for From the Earth, I'm the CEO for the building. Not just me, my brothers and my family. While we respect businesses that operate legally and ethically, we cannot respect those who lack communication and disregard the character of others. Unfortunately, our landlord, Jason, did not provide us with any notice that the changes will be made to our suite. Nor did Mr. Zaharoni provide any details about his plans to use our existing unit for his own purposes. I urge the council to consider further business practices in this meeting. The city of Costa Mesa should not be doing business with individuals like that. And I implore that the council members in this meeting to consider the implications of this decision. I also want to emphasize the negative impact that this decision will have on our community. Angel's Beauty Salon has been a fixture in this neighborhood for many years, and our customers rely on our services. But by forcing us to relocate, Mr. Zaharoni is disrupting the lives of our employees and customers and damaging the character of our community. We are a small business that provides a valuable service to our community, and we should not be forced out by a large corporation that has no regard of our well-being. Furthermore, the decision to replace a local business with a dispensary sends a message that the city prioritizes profits over the well-being of its own citizens. While I understand that the cannabis companies are now legally allowed to operate in certain areas, we must consider the impact that these businesses will have on our community. We need to ensure that the city is making decisions that benefit everyone, not just a select few. In conclusion, I just want to also want the council reconsidered their decision to replace Angel's Beauty Salon with the dispensary. This decision will have far-reaching consequences that will negatively impact the community. I would like the council to prioritize the well-being of citizens and make decisions that benefit everyone. We are a valuable part of this community, and we deserve to be treated with respect and fairness. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, City Council Members and Staff. My name is Efrain Rosales. As a resident from Costa Mesa, I'm proud to say this is the greatest city in Orange County. The reason why I've come here is to discuss and talk about marijuana dispensaries in our city, which is creating a major problem for our community and our future generation. As a consumer, I voted to legalize marijuana in California, but I disagree on the fact that the proximity of many dispensaries is being placed in every corner down Harbor Boulevard is unnecessary and unhealthy for citizens that are surrounded by them. Many other issues will arise. For example, it will affect business owners because they will not have enough parking space for their customers to park. Therefore, sales will decline substantially. It will create more crime and promote a drug environment, which will lead to more people driving under the influence, more drug addictions, and more mental and physical health issues. If that wasn't worse, marijuana cultivation is affecting everyone, including our ecosystem and habitat. Due to excessive energy consumption, it leads to more greenhouse gas emissions, soil erosion, deforestation, and water diversion. In general, it's not helping out the residents in all other schools that are located nearby. As a parent, I worry that children will be affected the most. They will get exposed to more secondhand smoke, try unwanted edibles and THC products without their knowledge, a mentality that is okay to sell drugs, and most importantly, destroying their health. All I'm asking is, please, don't be like the big tobacco companies that target young kids and target young kids by marketing and advertising this toxic poison. Because by you approving all of these dispensaries to sell in every corner, you are at fault as well, just as they are. Let's keep this city safe and in a drug-free environment. I just want to say thank you, Commissioner and City Council Members, for listening and taking time to help out the community when we really need you the most. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Tony Iraeta. I am a Costa Mesa resident. I've been here for several generations. I actually went to school here, I went to Wilson Elementary School, and I went to Tiwinkle. And we have family businesses in our community. This isn't just the only one, because we've branched out. We have several family members who operate and contribute to the community here. $41,000 is what this man paid to the city council in Long Beach to grease them down to make some behind-the-curtain activity work for his marijuana businesses. Because you're saying you're a drug dealer, that's what you're, you're a drug dealer? And what do we represent here? This is the city of the arts, not the city of the drugs. What are we standing here for? I mean, we're here talking about keeping a drug dealer out of our communities. I mean, come on, shouldn't we be talking about how much better we can make this community? How we can help the homeless, how we can help the kids, how we can protect the kids? This is a risk, and he is a liability. Him and everybody he says teaches a month's worth of knowledge of what marijuana is, what it represents. All of that doesn't matter. Because at the end of the day, it's only going to raise the crime. And it's a target whether you have an armed guard or not. You're going to get in there, and there will be a shootout. Because criminals don't care. They won't care about you, they won't care about the little guy with the little gun. They don't care about that, because they got guns too. So what are we doing here? We're putting our community in danger. There's a high school one block away from where this man's opening up. And not only that, that's literally around the block from here. That's like, we're two blocks away from where he wants to operate, from City Hall. Costa Mesa PD is like literally down the way. What are we doing here? I mean, they're kicking out a lady who's been rightfully working for 18 years. He says he cares about community, you don't care about community. Do you realize that she's getting kicked out? You don't realize that, because you don't care. You don't care to think about your neighbors. You don't care about your neighbors, and you're obviously, people don't care about you in Long Beach. So that's why you're trying to operate over here, but we're not going to let that happen. Everybody else here who wants to represent your slideshow has got it all wrong, because you're not a dispensary, you're a marijuana dealer. And my name is Tony Iraeta, remember me? Remember my face? Because I'm going to be around. Because I live in this community. And thank you, Commissioners and council members. Thank you for listening to me, and that's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, everyone. I know that the guy that came first, I think, he was saying he was so happy and he was jumping up and down about he only smokes this kind of weed. Well, where is he getting it from now? If he's only smoking that, can he go to that same store wherever it's at? The thing that I thought was kind of weird is that I seen all these bubbles on a map of different dispensaries.
of different dispensaries. Like what's going on here? I'm from San Diego. I'm a pastor for San Diego, um, and we have a real charity. We have a real foundation. It's called Diamonds Unite. We feed over a thousand people a week in San Diego, homeless people. Okay? In this group right here, this shop comes down and cuts hair for free. They come all the way from Orange County to cut hair in San Diego for free. This is the kind of people that we're going to move out of a place? A woman-owned business, been there for 18 years and we're talking about, oh, you could just get up and go, uh, down here. Well, there's four places down the street that they can get the same kind of stuff from. You guys got some special stuff? I mean, are you serious? The special thing is the community. It's the people, it's the barber shop. People have been going to this barber shop for years. If it wasn't a good barber shop, it would have closed down. 18 years, there's somebody that's probably been there for 18 years. You think they want to go down the street? You think they want to go to the other side of the, the place where, you know, they're smelling weed every time and more meth people are going to be around? All this stuff that I'm hearing, it makes no sense to me. You guys are supposed to be protecting this community. You guys are supposed to be doing better stuff and you're just opening up weed shop after weed shop. And then I heard somebody say that there was a delivery system. Oh, we're not even mapping the delivery systems. How many places are selling weed in this area right here? Are you kidding me? All you have is the places that you can go in the store? There's delivery places after, I mean, there might be a hundred, 200 places where you could buy weed and this guy's talking about he has the best weed. I bet he does. With all the money he has to bribe people and all the stuff he's doing, I bet he does. I bet he has the best weed. But guess what happens when you start smoking weed? I'm a homeless minister. I know. Then they start going to meth. Then they start going to fentanyl. Where we cut hair for free? Think about this. Forty-five people a month die where we cut hair at, where they're cutting the hair down in San Diego from fentanyl. You start getting this marijuana out here, they're going to start doing fentanyl. There's going to be people walking around like zombies. This is no joke. This isn't something just to give somebody some more money in his pocket. He can go somewhere else. He doesn't care about this neighborhood. Obviously he doesn't care about the neighborhood. You're going to kick somebody that's a woman for 18 years. You know how hard it is for a woman to own a business in America? Do you guys even understand minority situations? Everybody up here looks like they're minorities to me. How do you not understand? This, this is just, yeah, you're laughing. It's funny to you, but this is a real serious situation, the people in this neighborhood. People that got kids walking home and he's talking about putting up, you know, uh, sheet rock so they.
That's three minutes. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right. Quiet, please. Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak? Hannah, do we have anyone on Zoom or on phone?
No, we do not, Mr. German.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to close the public, uh, public comment portion of the public hearing. And Commissioners, do you have any further questions for the applicant? Yeah. What Commissioner just asked is if Mr. Zaharoni could come back up and make, uh, make a rebuttal if possible, and we are just about coming to that. So I'll start by asking Commissioners, do you have any further questions of the applicant? Okay. And Mr. Zaharoni, do you have any closing comments? And I'll go ahead and turn your mic on.
Um, that was a lot. Uh, I mean, yeah, I, I mean, these are, these are comments that we hear every time we open up a new store. We hear comments about crime, which doesn't happen around dispensary and certainly has never happened around our dispensaries. We hear comments about us displacing businesses, which again, the, the landlord is moving her three suites down. She's in the same building, on the same floor, on the more heavily trafficked side of the street. We're not kicking this woman out in the street. Had I been able to go and talk to her, I would have loved to have, but I, I don't have that ability. The landlord is the one who does it. I mean, we have a history of building great relationships with cities throughout California, Missouri, Michigan. I encourage everybody to look at what we've done in the past. Look at our relationships with the cities. Look at our relationships with our customers. Look at our relationships with our community. Look at our relationships with local businesses. We strive to have the best community possible in the places that we, uh, participate in. And that's what we're going to do here in Costa Mesa. I, I don't want to go through each comment because I understand their concern and I can say that when it comes to From the Earth and what we've done in all the communities we've been in in the past, the problems that they're talking about haven't happened to us. So that's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zaharoni. I appreciate that. Um, Commissioners, do you have any further questions for staff? Mr. Zick.
Uh, the one question I have based on the concerns expressed from a lollipop regarding smoke, uh, apparently from customers of Stizzi. But my question about that, because the, uh, conditions of approval are abundantly clear that that is, uh, not, uh, acceptable. How, my question is, uh, how do we address this with Stizzi? Is this a code enforcement? Can we bring the CUP back up for a review by the planning commission? What is the appropriate next step to deal with what sounds like a very legitimate problem?
Well, staff would investigate it to determine that it was valid and, um, and then we would raise it, um, from that level. We would give them an opportunity to correct the issue or if it's serious enough, we could go another more harsh route. But, um, it would start with code enforcement as you mentioned.
Okay. And will you take that action to do that investigation?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Is that all Commissioner Zick? Okay. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Taber.
I think to Commissioner Zick, um, gosh, if that's so common at this location, we don't know that, you know, it's an allegation right now, but I think, uh, Mr. Drop, kind of that proves to be true, perhaps we need to expand that and look around at other operators. If there's odor, odor problems, I think because of constraints for staffing, it seems like sometimes we wait till someone makes a call to go check on it. Um, that's what was communicated in, in, in other, uh, presentations that came over other industries or houses or noise or whatever. Um, but certainly we're at the very beginning of this thing. We want to make sure that we enter this correctly. And so I would hope that we would be able to follow up on, uh, any odor problems quickly and efficiently. And if it is a problem, take care of it quickly now so we don't have to deal with it widespread later. The other thing for the city is, are you aware of any investigations that were alleged this evening of this operator? Or can we not comment publicly on that? Thanks, Michelle.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any of those, um, comments or mentioned. Staff was not aware.
I guess the last thing for staff is, um, the gentleman that spoke as a building owner in between existing operator and the operator that's, uh, trying to get through tonight. Are there conditions of outreach? It seems odd that he doesn't know about this, basically. Um, should he have been informed? Seems certainly there was mailers, right? Or is that only to residents?
No, the, um, notification requirements are ownership and, and, and residents. And, um, they would have been notified for that. Correct?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Taber. Anyone else? Okay. I will now close the, uh, public hearing and I think I will go ahead and take the opportunity to make a motion. And I make a motion to continue this item until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Is there a second? Seconded by Toller. I think we've, we've heard a lot of information tonight and I think that it, it would do us well to remember why we're here. We are here to uphold the general plan. We are here to uphold the ordinance, but it appears that there may be some additional information that's missing in order to make the findings one way or the other. So it is my hope that in that time, that, um, we can get additional information based off of some of the feedback that we heard tonight so that we can come to the point of actually making a decision. That is my motion. Vice Chair Toller.
Yeah, I think that's the right move tonight. I think, um, a lot of us were maybe taken aback by talks of loitering and smells, which are not supposed to be happening. And I think there's, there's some answers and some communication that needs to happen all around before the next meeting. So I'm in support of that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Taber.
I'd like to make an alternate motion.
Sure.
Is that all I have to say?
Sure, yeah.
Or you have to state what the motion is?
Uh, sure, you can. What's your motion?
That we deny the application.
Quiet, quiet, please. Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Vivar. Um, Commissioner Taber, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I think in addition to, um, sticking to the city plan, we have the opportunity to evaluate an applicant and that's why we ask a series of questions. We ask about business plans and marketing. We ask about security. We ask about odor control. We ask about hiring. We ask about a plethora of issues surrounding the business. And on many levels tonight, after two years of paying rent, uh, I have concerns about the applicant because it was sloppy. Even the, uh, moving of this, uh, other establishment in the building. I believe that this applicant carries a ton of weight with that building owner. And had he said, we need to deal with this, the, the building owner would have listened and this could have been resolved prior to tonight. Um, I have concerns about another building owner in such close proximity having huge concerns. While he's not opposed to the application on its merit, there wasn't common consideration for shared parking. So a lot of little things are adding up to maybe this isn't the best operator for our city. And while technically it might fall inside the city plan, uh, I think that we need to use what's in front of us and evaluate operators. And there's too many little things adding up for me to want to, uh, accept this application.
Thank you, Commissioner Taber. Commissioner Vivar, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, sir. Um, I, I think that I second, of course, the sentiments of Commissioner Taber. And, uh, I also feel that the findings can't be made for the, um, that this would not be materially detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of the community is, is was, um, kind of evidenced by, uh, a lot of the comments tonight. Um, then this, it's a responsibility to, uh, we're tasked with the responsibility of stewardship of the, of the city and, and, um, I think that, um, when you have, uh, longstanding local businesses coming, uh, to share their concerns, I think it should be taken very seriously. Land use settlement 6.7 says to, um, encouraging you and retain existing businesses in the city and that doesn't, that doesn't, um, extend to just the, um, uh, businesses that get moved or relocated or what have you, but, um, also businesses, uh, that, um, leave an area and we don't know whether or not they would find another place in Costa Mesa. So I don't, I don't think the findings are there in terms of the health, welfare and safety and kind of the, um, very serious concerns I have and that the members of the community have regarding this. I don't think the findings can be made. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Does anyone else wish to speak to the alternative motion?
I do.
Yes.
Okay. While I can appreciate the original motion for continuance, what, what I couldn't see with that, and we may be coming back to that, I don't know. I couldn't see a rationale for me to get additional information that might change my mind. But I want to say a couple of things before I tell you whether I'm in support of this motion or not. First of all, this application is not a referendum on whether we ought to have retail cannabis in the city. I understand people that don't want it and I understand their reasons for not wanting it. But the residents voted and passed measure Q. Therefore we have retail cannabis in the city. City council had a number of meetings, very carefully considered the input from all the people that wanted to provide input and from that formulated an ordinance. When it comes to displacing the businesses, while I'm sympathetic to that idea and those impacts, when it comes to real estate deals, leases, rents, we live in a free market. If you're on a month-to-month rent, whether it's an apartment or whether it's an office building, you run the risk that you might get displaced. That's why some businesses will negotiate long-term leases and long-term leases with options so that they don't get displaced by some other business that might want to come in and pay that landlord more rent for your space. But when you're on a month-to-month, um, you are vulnerable to that displacement. Our ordinance talks about proximity to sensitive uses, schools, and there's a whole list of what those are. Unfortunately, proximity to a dental office wasn't one of those. Uh, proximity to a karate club was not one of those. And while I understand your concern about that, all I can say is that's not in the ordinance and our job is to implement the policies that the council has, has established. So while I might sympathize with your concern as a resident, um, it doesn't sway my opinion. It can't sway my opinion. The idea of saturation, uh, you know, we have so many cannabis shops and I get that whole sentiment too. Why, why do we need another one? There's already, I get all that. But we don't have any limitation on the number of cannabis retail operations that can open in the city. The only limitation we have is that you can't be close to these sensitive uses. So any other spot in our zoning that would allow commercial is fair game. So if we have 20 of these things on that corner, we might end up with 20. And then good luck, the free market and competition will decide how many we ultimately end up with. So from a land use standpoint, I don't see that there's much we can do. However, in granting a conditional use permit, we have to make certain findings and there's three of them. We have to first find that the development is substantially compatible with developments in the same general area. And I think it's pretty easy to see that this business would be compatible with businesses in that same general area. Even if we add twice as many retail cannabis shops, it's compatible. A second finding that we have to make is that it will not allow a use or density or intensity that's not in accordance with the general plan. Well, the density and intensity of this business is in conformance with the general plan. It doesn't exceed that. But it's this third finding that is the one that, um, that I base my decision on. And it's the one that says that the use will not be materially detrimental to the health, safety and general welfare of the public. We have to be sure that this business would not be materially detrimental We have to be sure that this business would not be materially detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the public. That doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to leave sharp sticks and broken glass out on the sidewalk. And that's the kind of danger that we're trying to protect against. But when I hear a cannabis business telling me that they're intending to partner, part of their business strategy, to partner with youth organizations and schools, I'm sorry, to me, that's a risk. That's your plan? That's what you're telling me? How can I ignore that? To me, that sounds like a risk that is materially detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Sounds like it's a well-run business. Sounds like they do a pretty good job of running their business. If they didn't, if there was evidence that they didn't have a good business plan, or that they were sloppy, or that they didn't have highly educated people, then that could also represent a risk. But that isn't the risk I'm concerned about here. I'm concerned about the risk to our youth from a business that says that's part of our plan. They want to get involved in the community, great. Want to volunteer with organizations, great. You want to be involved with our youth organizations? No, that one's a bridge too far. I'll be supporting the motion to deny.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioners Rojas or Andrade? Commissioner Rojas.
You know, I'm sitting here listening to the arguments, both sides. Appreciate the comments my fellow commissioners have said. And I put a few notes when we first started going through this, and I still can't overcome them. So I'm going to respectfully disagree with Commissioner Zick here on the saturation piece because I do think that is a saturation issue here. And that one, I just can't overcome it, you know? Notwithstanding the commentary that we heard. So to reiterate, is it's not this body's responsibility to say yes or no to cannabis. It's where are you going to put it? And that's really what it is. And then when I start hearing things of either displacing or relocating businesses, that's an issue. When you have schools that are developing in the area, that's an issue. And then you have saturation, that's an issue. So I will be supporting the motion to deny.
Thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner Andrade?
Yeah, I mean, it's, the more we went through it, it just really resonated that it's just not a good fit at the moment. And I agree with Commissioner Taber. I mean, you had such a long time to just shoot a note, walk by and check out with the local neighbors. So it just seemed like such a missed opportunity to really help solidify your application because it's a clear concern and it's not, you know, having a good fit with the community is so essential. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Vice Chair, do you wish to speak to this all-alternative motion at all? Because we've already spoken on the first motion. Okay, I'll go ahead and speak to this alternate motion in saying that, I've taken note of what everyone here has said, and I largely agree with all of you. I think it's in the absence of the information that I need the additional information. It's akin to the way that we approached 168 Cabrillo, or was it 167, or just the Cabrillo project, where we needed staff to go back and make additional findings for us to make a decision. And then we arrived at a decision after that fact. That is similar to the way that I'm approaching my original motion, but also the way, more so, why I cannot come to deny the project outright because we don't know what the legal aspects are of the parking situation. We don't know what that agreement looks like and if the city is liable at all for enforcing the pre-existing parking conditions on a site where, from what we heard from one of the property owners this evening, that they already have an agreement in place before cannabis even came along to say if you have additional properties, you need to come and renegotiate the parking. We haven't heard on that. And we also haven't heard from the property or the building owner to say that this intention to move the business just to the other side of the building isn't actually going to come true. Right now, it's hearsay. And there is, there appears to be a lot of missing information here. So I am not in a position to approve this project. I am also not in a position to deny this project. So it puts me in a position to do exactly what I believe the intent is for us, and that's to seek additional information, to stay inquisitive. So I cannot support this alternative motion precisely because I am eager to find more information. Commissioner Taber.
I'd like to call for a vote on the original motion.
I think by process, we need to move the alternative motion first. Unless, unless it's polled for whatever reason. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Preziosi or Director Dropkin?
The Tarquin took a look at it.
Could you repeat that question, please?
There's two motions, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Thanks, Commissioner Taber. So there are two motions. The original motion was to continue the item. The alternate motion was to deny the project. And what Commissioner Taber asked was, can we take the vote, the original vote first before the alternate? And I said no.
No, correct. The alternate motion takes precedence. Vote on that.
Exactly.
If that passes, then the original motion is null and void.
And that's, and that's unless, yes, the alternate motion needs to go first unless the maker of the motion and his second decide to pull their motion, correct?
Okay, so I'm going to call for a vote on the alternate motion.
Yeah, so unless anyone else has anything else to say. Commissioner Vivar?
Mr. Chairman, I'm so confused, what are we going to be voting on?
The alternate motion to, and that motion is to deny this project.
Right, okay, I'm ready.
Okay. All right, Anna, we'll call the question for the alternate motion.
We just need to clear the board and put the...
Sure, absolutely.
I think that's flipped, Anna.
There we go, got it.
Are we voting?
Yeah.
That motion carries 5-2 with Commissioner, or Chair Erith and Vice Chair Toler voting no.
Okay, thank you, Anna. That decision is final unless appealed to the city council within seven days. Thank you. That brings us to the end of that item. That brings us to old business, new business, business. There are neither. That brings us to Public Services Report, Mr. Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just be briefing my words here. So, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, honorable members of the Planning Commission, maybe I should wait a little bit.
If you, if you could all be quiet on your way out, please, thank you.
Yes. So for tonight's Public Works Report, it's my distinct pleasure to announce that this week is National Public Works Week, which started yesterday on Sunday, May 21st, and lasts until this Saturday, May 27th. This year's theme is connecting the world through public works. From improving our streets and picking up trash, sweeping our streets, maintaining our traffic signals, improving our storm rain system, promoting sustainability and environment, and also making active transportation vibrant. The commitment to our tight-knit community fosters community involvement and dedication. So on behalf of all those professionals here, we make Public Works Week a true calling and wish everyone a happy and productive National Public Works Week. Thank you very much. I defer back to the chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yang. Mr. Dropkin, Development Services.
Nothing.
All right, and, excuse me, sir. Mr. Preziosi, Attorney's Report.
No report this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Preziosi. That brings us to the end of the Planning Commission meeting for this evening. And I will adjourn the meeting to June 12th, 2023. Thank you for joining us this evening, have a good night. Thank you.